The crowd is thick tonight. And we're gonna have fun there. So, let's go ahead and stand and Mr. Vice President's gonna say the prayer and then we're gonna do the pleasantries on the flag.
Lord, make us instruments of your peace. Where there is hatred, let us sow love. Where there is injury, pardon. Where there is doubt, faith. Where there is despair, hope. Where there is darkness, light. And where there is sadness, joy. O divine master, grant that we may not so much seek to be consoled as to console, to be understood as to understand, to be loved as to love. For it is in giving that we receive. It is in pardoning that we are pardoned. And it is in dying that we are born to eternal life. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of the good and bad, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Luxer, for that great prayer. Appreciate it. Okay, wanna welcome everybody tonight. So, let's go ahead and get started on the agenda here. So, we're gonna start off with April 26th is before us. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda of April 26th? Okay, so, hearing none, the chair moves that the agenda be accepted with by unanimous consent. Moving on to the minutes. Okay, the minutes of March 22nd are before us. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? Okay, hearing none, the chair moves that the agenda be accepted as unanimous consent.
He meant, he meant the minutes.
I meant minutes, I'm sorry. Just checking, see if you...
Obviously.
Check. Just checking with you. Dispersments, dispersments are before us of the 26th. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the dispersments? Okay, hearing none, the chair moves that dispersments be accepted by unanimous consent. Okay. Okay, we have one of our favorite people here tonight. Come on up, Ms. Patty. An update on Talbot Humane. She's the executive director of Talbot Humane and she does a great job.
Oh, thanks.
And tell us a little bit about what's going on.
Sure. Well, it's a team effort, so we're gonna put that out there.
Okay.
I just get to lead a great team of people, so. I wanna start with, because I haven't been here since November, what I call our 2021 good news, her calendar year. We had 701 animals adopted, reunited with owners, relocated or transferred to other rescue groups. 1,230 animals were spayed or neutered. 100, or excuse me, 1,300 animals were microchipped. We had 176 owners who benefited from our retention and intervention program. Those are animals which very likely could have been surrendered to the shelter because they couldn't afford acute vet care supplies or were having behavioral issues. We, excuse me, dispersed over seven tons of food to Talbot County residents. This year, we partnered with CarePacks to extend our reach into the community and that's been something fun for our staff. They really enjoy doing that and it's really reaching people who may not come to the shelter to ask for help. And our volunteers gave more than 9,000 hours last year. Fiscal year 2021, we saw a 14% increase in animal intake over 2020, which we knew was probably gonna happen because 2020 was an anomaly. It was a very weird year for everything. But this fiscal year of 2022 compared to the same time period I did, July 1st to April 25th, both years, we're seeing a 13% increase in intake. So, we're likely going to see numbers close to what we were seeing in 2019 of animals coming in to the shelter. While intake is continuing to rise, our placement of animals with adoption and reuniting and working with other rescue groups continues to be strong. So, it's not really a problem, but it is a trend that we're seeing and it's a trend that's across the country. Our current population is only 65 animals. Late March to about this time in April tends to be what we call our sweet spot, where we don't have kittens and we've moved a lot of the adult cats and the adult dogs into adoption. But kitten season arrived Saturday and yesterday, we received 15 kittens alone. That doesn't include other animals. So, we're always looking for foster families. It's a great way to teach children responsibility and get your pet fixed temporarily. And sometimes people are foster fails, which we also really likes. Animal control, which is what the Talbot County government helps to fund, we've had 260 initial calls thus far this fiscal year. This doesn't include the number of requests for public assistance, vet transport, delivery of food and supplies, or the number of times that Officer Gonzalez has to go out and do follow-up calls and visits. And we are back to one officer and myself. So, we are still actively hiring for an animal control position. It's an entry level and they learn on the job and we send them to academies. So, it's a great opportunity for somebody who wants to enter the field of animal control and humane law enforcement. On that note, last week was Animal Cruelty and Humane Violence Awareness Week. It's known how we treat animals is often indicative of how we, of other interpersonal issues. The link between animal cruelty and human violence has been proven. In 2016, the FBI began collecting detailed case information on animal cruelty cases. Our work as humane law enforcement is much more than cute kittens and reuniting animals and we really want to encourage people when you see something to contact us. It is really important that we're, we know what's going on. Animal neglect isn't just an animal problem, it's a community issue. And we always say, when animals are abused, people are at risk and when people are abused, animals are at risk. Our microchip program continues to go strong. This month is Animal Pet Identification Month. Excuse me, that's a big mouthful. We're offering $1 microchipping and there's still time to take advantage of it. This includes lifetime registration of the microchip. And it's normally $10, so even if you miss this month, it's not a huge amount. Our spay neuter program, we received the Department of Agriculture Spay Neuter Grant, again, for the eighth time for 2022. We received just over $31,500 to provide 500 surgeries for dogs and cats, free of charge for qualifying owners within Talbot and Dorchester Counties. Talbot Humane is matching this amount so that we may offer reduced cost surgeries based on the sliding scale of income for residents as well. So, if people don't necessarily qualify for free, we are offering subsidized surgeries. And as of March 31st, we've already completed 290 surgeries. We continue to offer senior internships. We're excited, we have some Gunston students coming in May to do their senior internships with us. But that's something that we really encourage students. If you are looking to go into the animal sciences or you think you want to go into the animal sciences, it's a good time to see if you really want to because it's not, like I said, puppies and kittens all the time. We can always use volunteers. We can't do what we do without them. Right now, we're looking for, you know, fundraisers, committee members, and people who want to be out in the community. And as the 90th anniversary of Talbot Humane is celebrated in August 3rd, 2022, we are excitedly looking to our future. As you've probably heard, we had the pleasant surprise to purchase the property directly next door to us in November, thanks to St. Peter and Paul reaching out to us. So, we couldn't say no, so we purchased the property and now we're backing up several steps and doing the detailed work of planning our goal as a state-of-the-art facility for pets, people, and wildlife. And we'll be sharing every step of the way of the community. We wanna be very transparent and we feel strongly, this is the community's animal shelter and we wanna hear from everyone. And I just wanna thank you for having me tonight and letting me, you know, I always say I could go on for hours about the work we do, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Patty. Mr. Ray?
Phil, Patty, you're doing a wonderful job updating us on what's going on with Talbot Humane and also animal control. We know that it is a passion of yours. Always can tell that by your presentations. So, I hope that you can get that position filled as you're probably going into your, like you said, your busy time of the year.
Yes, most definitely.
Do they carry a badge?
Excuse me?
They do carry badges, right?
Yes, yeah.
Ms. Price?
Good, just thank you for the update. We're glad, glad to see you here.
Thanks.
Mr. Devillia?
I know we've had a couple weird years in here, but with the regulations that we put in place, have you seen an increase of complaints or decline in it or...?
So, what we've seen is people reporting situations and our officers' ability to address them. And as I shared when we were working on these, when the law requires you to do better, you do it. And most people, when we explain why, they're very in tune to it. I do believe we don't see a chain dog in Talbot County again anymore and that's something I'm personally very proud of. And when people have questions, as I said, we're very transparent. Our staff answers, our officer answers. But we've seen a decrease in cruelty in our counties since we've instituted those. And the state, thankfully, just instituted a state extreme weather bill last week. The governor signed that. So, the counties that don't have anything on the books. Our law is a little bit more tight than the state law, but those counties that don't have that on the books now have something that has some teeth to help the animals, so.
Sounds like it's working.
Yes, most definitely.
Thanks, Mr. Devillia. Mr. Luxer?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Have a good evening, everyone.
Thanks, Patty. Okay, up next is Mr. Ray Clark. You wanna come on up and help us with the priorities with the Maryland Department of Transportation?
You got it.
That'd be great.
I think as our, at the last council meeting, council, you asked us to go back and we went back and I guess looked at the priority listing, made some changes to that. At the same time, we also had received, I guess, an email from the town of Oxford, so we've added the town of Oxford's, was it Maryland Route 333, the Oxford Causeway, as priority number six. At the same time, I think the county council had asked for information related to Queen Anne's County's transportation list and think as well as Dorchester County. So, those are also provided to the council as well.
Now, those are old. Queen Anne's was last year and Dorchester's three years old, so.
And I think that's, I think, what we ended up receiving, so, at this point. But again, I think for the council, I think what we're here is to try, one, for you to get your all's blessing or, you know, if we need to re-rank the priorities. Our current priorities for the people that are, I guess, listening or watching, right now, we have Maryland Route 322 slash US, I'm sorry, 322 slash US 50 intersection north as our one first priority and this is for safety improvements as well, if possible, light, I think. At the same time, we have number two, priority number two is Maryland Route 33, capacity and evacuation improvements. And then we have grouped up into, I guess, priority number three, three projects. That would be US Route 50 and Maryland 328, Goldsboro Street intersection improvements. 3B would be Maryland Route 50 and Maryland Route 331, Dover Street intersection improvements. And then 3C would be US Route 50 and Chapel Road intersection improvements. Our priority number four would be US Route 50, Maryland 309, and Maryland 662 intersection capacity improvements. And number five would be the Maryland Routes 329, Royal Oak Road, safety improvements, as well as number six, which was added, which would be Maryland Route 333, Oxford Causeway. For the council, I did talk with Ken Fender on Friday related to Maryland Route 329. They are gearing up to try and pave 329. There will be no widening of 329, but it'll actually be repaved. So, they're gonna probably do that in May. Part of our discussion is, one of the things we discussed was really on 329, for any type of safety improvements, we would have to be looking at acquiring land for that. So, one of the ideas, you know, in talking with Ken, I said we would go back from our standpoint, use our GIS and determine the properties and see if we can assist SHA in identifying the properties and then what the potential right-of-way needs would be for each property. And so, we could maybe do that as an exercise and then forward that to SHA for their review.
If they go and repave it and then figured out that they could widen it or whatnot, they're gonna, they're gonna say, we just spent all this money on repaving? Does it, does it make sense to do one before the other?
Yeah, unfortunately, SHA, they look at what repaving of 329 is what they call system preservation. So, they're actually doing these, they receive funding every year for system preservation. That's just the repaving portion. Any widening would basically be a capital project that we'd have to work with them on.
And then my other question is, what do we do? Two and, two and all the threes got flip-flopped? Is that how we change the order?
I...
No, no, two, two was, two was two before and the 3A, B, C was there before.
So, no orders changed then?
We, what we did is, is we added the grouping of number four with the other Route 50 crossings. That was the change there.
Right, exactly. So, I mean, we kind of, and we generated a heading, I think, you know, basically showing 3A, 3B, 3C, basically, you know, address safety issues, you know, for cross-street traffic on US, on Route 50.
So, you have another track?
I, I, I guess I'm just beating the same drum over again regarding the notion of overpass over 50. I can't think of anywhere on 50 from Ocean City all the way up to Chestertown where there's an overpass. Can you think of anywhere on 50 where there's an overpass?
At this point in time, there isn't other than...
I can't think of an overpass anywhere on Route 2 going and running through Anarundo County, which is probably a little bit more condensed as far as population. I just have a problem, and again, this is just a little pet peeve of mine, whether or not, you know, we should be really putting these three above something that can be addressed like the Oxford Causeway. I think that, that's more reasonable, in my opinion, from a cost standpoint. I just don't see anywhere in my lifetime or yours that the state's gonna put a overpass on Route 50.
And again, this is for the council. I mean, if we wanted to make number four, let's say number three, and move 3A, 3A, B, and C down to three, four, and/or move the others up, we can do that. I mean, that's up to the council.
Well, I agree with you. It's the verbiage, if, what is needed, and we talked about this last time and I think there was even a letter to the editor. You're talking about what, the only thing you can do is put a true bypass on the east side of 50, you know, and swing out and around to the east. But for us to put verbiage in there about an overpass, I think is very bizarre.
That's not gonna fly.
No, it's not gonna be an overpass. The only thing that can be done is potentially another bypass out to the east side.
Or maybe we look at a, you know, instead of, instead of an overpass, providing enough right-of-way for, let's say, an expanded, you know, light or expanded, you know, let's say, at Airport Road. Maybe we expand Airport Road so we can bring more traffic through. So, we have, let's say, two lanes crossing versus one lane crossing. I mean, that may be something we wanna do.
I mean, you have to have another pathway besides traffic lights.
Right, I mean, the only, I mean, I know that that's one of the things that was done, let's say, five or 10 years ago, or maybe 10 years ago, with the Maryland Route 322 and Maryland Route 33, they did systemic expansion of that intersection. So, you actually have two lanes now that can turn left to kind of help with the movement of traffic onto 33. I mean, there may be some things we can...
You're talking about 50 on 2, 322?
I apologize, sir. I was just using, I was trying to show another intersection that was expanded. I mean, instead of maybe outlining an overpass, we look at an expanded...
Oh, at Bay Street, St. Michael's Road, right there?
Yes, yes, exactly. Where it was expanded, it was always kind of one way or one lane traffic. Now, it was expanded with two lanes turning left on 233. Instead of an overpass, maybe we note that, you know, we look at maybe increasing of an intersection for providing more capacity for left-turn movements or crossover traffic.
Two left-turn lanes rather than one.
Yeah, or two, two...
Because you sit through three lights and all of that.
Right, right.
I think the overpass language is silly. Maybe you put something in like a, an east-side bypass or like what you just described, you know, additional lanes so that people don't get stuck sitting through, you know, all those lights.
I mean, and instead of saying overpass or, you know, what we can do is scratch that and just say, you know, maybe expansion of existing, you know, intersections to provide more through traffic, you know, additional lanes, you know, providing additional lanes for through traffic.
Would the Oxford, would the Oxford Causeway be more, as far as from a time standpoint of getting done? Do you think it's more of a likelihood of that Causeway being done before any expansion of these existing intersections? I mean, this is a, this is a safety issue. Well, not to say that those potentially are not, but flooding in that low-lying area...
In terms of evacuation routes, public safety, ambulances and service and that sort of thing?
Exactly, exactly.
It actually closely relates to number two, which is about the same issues on Route 33.
Right. I would, I would like to see that up.
That's fine.
I'd put them together.
Yeah, I'd see that moved up because that's, that's more something that's a safety issue and probably more within the reason for them to actually consider doing, not that they're gonna do it anytime soon.
And I'm gratified too that we're going to support Oxford with that, with listing that initiative.
So, the other thing I was looking at too, so, in the next, hopefully, five years or so, priority four, that, that whole world's gonna change there.
More than likely with the hospital.
Because of the hospital there.
Correct.
And, and all that stuff there, so, I'm, I'm really not sure that maybe, that maybe should be, you know...
Lowered on the priority.
Lower on the priority because we're gonna have to deal with that no matter what in five years. And we'll have to, when the hospital comes, because the hospital, it enters off Route 50, doesn't it?
Yes.
It's, the new hospital will be entering off Route 50.
Correct.
And part of, part of that 662 gets cut, cut off, I'm thinking, doesn't it?
What happens is they relocate 662, but to your point, what they're gonna do is the entrance that the community center has today would be expanded and then ultimately walk or drive right into a traffic circle that would be there. Then, you know, they would basically either go to, I think, one to the community center or they could end up going to the hospital services around that traffic circle.
So, I think maybe, I'm just thinking out loud for us, that, that, that's gonna be a huge priority in five years. So, we might alert the state that, that isn't gonna be something that gets pushed out 10 years. That this is, that's gonna have to be now.
Right.
Meaning in, in the next 60 months.
And we are, we are alerting them to that, that possibility is in the verbiage here.
Yeah.
But again, Ray, we have, we have some controversy about, about an overpass.
I mean, we can, we can make that change. We can make that change and say, you know, you know, an intersection capacity, making intersection capacity improvements to have more cross-through traffic. I mean, that might be something that could be achieved easier than, let's say, an overpass. Now, instead of having, you know, one lane turning left, you have two lanes turning left. So, and I think as, as we have to your point, with the hospital being moved there, it's gonna be critical to be able to get, let's say, ambulances from that side of the county, let's say, on the east side to the west side where the hospital will be relocated. So, it'd be worthwhile to have something that can get more traffic through, so.
Well, you're, I mean, if I remember looking at the design, you have two ways to enter that hospital campus. One would be off of 50, as you noted, but then the second entry would be on 662 to get onto the campus. So, you still have a second way of getting on the camp, on that campus.
So, like if you're coming from Queen Anne's County, they might use that.
Use the back of 662, right, 662 to go on, exactly.
Mr. Devillia?
So, I just had two points. One, with that, the 50, number four, so when you're coming headed south on the north side of town, there is the blinking light that's always steady blinking to let you know that there's an intersection coming up. But that's a long shot when you're coming from Annapolis first thing in the morning and it seems like people are usually falling asleep and not seeing the red light. Would it be possible to include wording to say to, to change that blinking light to an advance notice of red light?
That's fine.
That's what they have at Chesapeake College for pretty much the same purpose. There's already the flashing light that's always flashing, but I feel like the advance notice would really help. And then, secondly, with, with all of these threes, what if we had a work session with the town of Easton to hear what they wanna do with Calvert Street extension? Because that's, that's gonna become another little bypass like Washington Street somewhat is. I think, I think it might be beneficial to us to have a work session on that and hear about...
That's a great idea.
I mean, I actually have a question about that. I mean, I was surprised when you mentioned it. They're cutting through a state road. How do they have the ability to do that without state approval? To add another intersection when we're dealing with this problem?
I don't know, but I, see, and so if we all have questions, I think that that might be something worth scheduling.
Yeah, I'd like that idea.
That's a good idea.
Well, on the priorities, so I understand this, what we do is, number one and number two is stay the same. We move Oxford to number three.
Yes, sir.
Do we wanna move number four currently, which is the US Route 50 and 309? Do we wanna move that up or leave it where it is?
I thought we wanted to move Oxford to number two.
Oh, you wanna move to number two, okay.
I don't know about that. I mean, we've been, we've been trying to get...
Two and three are both related, certainly.
Right, I mean, we've been working on the St. Michael's Road and that low section. I don't, I mean, Oxford, I'm not saying it doesn't need to be addressed and moved up, but I don't wanna put it in front of the St. Michael's Road because there's way more traffic that goes up into the Bay 100 area, for sure.
Right, I was more thinking...
It's their only way in and, you know, in and out.
Okay, well, I was thinking more combining from safety purposes.
No, I wanna keep the St. Michael's Road up there.
No problem.
And I'll, I'll, I'll just...
You could do 2A, 2B.
Make Oxford, we're saying make Oxford number three, leave St. Michael's Road alone.
Okay.
And the question, I guess, for the council, we wanna make 329 number four and just move all the crossover projects down?
I like, I would, I would, because those crossover projects, to Frank's point, you might need some additional conversation with the town first to see where they are with it.
I can, I can support the change. They're still in the list, they're important.
Right, I can move it down.
It's an expression of what's important, but, but, that's fine.
So, we'll go ahead and do our 3A, B, and C's. They'll turn to 5A, 5B, and 5C. And then, the US Maryland Route 309 would go down to number six.
Okay.
And we'll change, I'm sorry.
One other possible addition to this list, we, and Mr. Clark, you're well aware of this because you've been responding to some emails. We've had a citizen request about a signaled intersection on the St. Michael's Road at Peenac Road. That is basically as traffic is entering into the, the more congested area, the more built-up area coming into St. Michael's. And I know that, thanks to your initiative, that, that state highway engineers are already looking at doing a traffic study for that to find out if this meets the warrants for that. I don't know if it's worth adding that to the priority list since there's, there's something in the works on, on this, you know. Does that, does that rise to the level of these or...
One thing we can do, and this is up for the coun, I mean, for the council, I mean, we can probably change number, or just the title if you like and basically note Maryland Route 33, Maryland Route 33, capacity, safety, and evacuation improvements and kind of incorporate, you know, any type of...
Add sentence to it.
...accident and whatnot to try and...
I'm perfectly comfortable with that approach.
I like that, Ray.
And we'll, we'll note that maybe to do studies and warrant studies for signals and we'll just add that kind of at the end.
Thank you.
That sounds great.
Sounds good, I'm good.
Okay. So, being that said, any more comments, council?
Nope.
Are we okay? So...
Need a motion?
Yeah, do we, yeah, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I make the motion that we, we approve the transportation priority list as laid out by Mr. Clark.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion as second. Adam Secretary, could you call the vote? Okay, we got a motion in second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Okay, thanks, thanks for the good work, Ray.
Thanks, Ray.
Oh, my goodness, we're on time for a public hearing.
Yeah, we are. Yeah, we are.
Or continuation thereof.
A continuation, okay.
Would you like me to stay?
Um, yeah.
I think, I think you're going to have to, on a couple of these, you're going to have to.
Yep, that, that'd be great. So, just a little bit of ground rules here. If you, if you wish to speak tonight, you have three minutes if you're individual, five minutes if you're representing an organization. So, I, I think that Miguel, did, well, did you want to stay up here? Miguel and Greg, did you want to, did you guys want to come up or?
I, I can, if you like, I mean, I can handle, you know, I can advise you what, what the Pollers' Advisory Board did. Miguel can advise you of what the, what the Planning Commission did. I can also do both, whatever it takes.
Have them both at the same time?
That.
Is it able together or no?
That's fine.
They can?
Sounds good.
Yeah. If I said, okay, Madam Secretary?
That's your 18 there.
I, I do have the 18 there. Yeah, exactly. All right.
Do you want me to read each one or read them all?
Yeah, I think we're going to have to go down the line here, and we'll, we'll, I think we, we'll start off with Resolution 315.
Resolution number 315, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan for the purpose of adding or modifying the Talbot County Capital Projects for fiscal years 2023 and 2024 to add a new capital project in the amount of $8.6 million for the purpose of replacing the town of Easton's bleed water treatment plant with upgraded technology.
Okay, so at this time, is there anybody here that would like to speak on 315? Anybody like to come up? Okay, if there's, if there's nobody here, we're, we will, go ahead and leave it open, correct?
Well, we can, we can advise you of what the Pollers' Advisory Board did.
Let's go ahead here.
As well as the Planning Commission.
No problem.
Um, I can just let you know, on March 17th, the Pollers' Advisory Board made, passed a motion recommending the county council adopt Resolution 315 via a 3 to 0 vote.
Okay.
And on April 20th, the Planning Commission approved a motion to certify that Resolution 315 was consistent with the Talbot County Comprehensive Plan.
And just, so, because a lot of these were taken, now we can't vote on them together, but I'm looking at the public works, it says 315 to 32, Resolutions 315 through Resolution 321 were all the same. Is that the same also with the Planning Commission for those, that, that grouping of, of six or seven?
That is correct. 315 through 321, that were all approved unanimously, actually. Certainly that they cert, Planning Commission certified consistency with the comp plan.
So, they don't need to do this for each one?
Okay, so, okay, so we, so we're going to go ahead and, and is council okay on voting on 315 through 321?
Aye, Mr. Callahan. I would ask that we move 315 to final vote.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, Madam Secretary, we got a motion in second on the floor. Could you please call the roll?
Or are you going to offer the public an opportunity? This was a continuation of public hearings.
Right.
I think he.
He did.
He did initially.
I, I asked him to come up, yeah.
Yeah, what if, yeah, you did close the public here on 315, correct?
Yeah, I did, yeah, nobody come up.
All right. So, my motion still stands?
Still stands, so.
And Ms. Price still second?
Yeah.
All right.
We okay for the vote now?
Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Okay, with that being said here, get my paperwork straight. Okay, now we're going, am I right? We're going to go to 322.
Well, we have to do 316. Get a read all in?
Oh, I see.
Yeah, 316.
Okay. I thought the, I thought the motion was.
For 315.
The only.
Yes, sir. That's the one, that's the one she read.
Okay.
Right, but.
And that's, that's the only one that we offered the public hearing on so far, so.
I see, okay, all right, I was confused a little. I thought we were, were voting on all of them, but I.
No, we have to do each one, I'm sorry.
So, if you could do 316, that'd be great.
Resolution number 316, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan for the purpose, purpose of adding or modifying the Talbot County Capital Projects for fiscal years 2023 and 2024 to add a new capital project in the amount of $800,000 for forced main pressure sensors and vacuum sensors for the Region 1, Unionville, Tunis Mills, and Copperville; Region 2, Royal Oak, Newcombe, and Bellevue; and Region 2, Martingham Sewer Service Areas.
Okay, Ray, you want, you want to go ahead?
Again, on March 5th, uh, March 17th, the Pollers' Advisory Board recommended the county council adopt Resolution 316 via a 3 to 0 vote.
Okay, all right, that, that's good.
Miguel?
Right, I mean, we already did this. We already said that they're good.
I mean, for, for the record, I just.
Yeah.
For the record, the Planning Commission certified consistency of Resolution 316 with the comp plan.
Okay, that's good. And at this time, I'll open it to the public. If there's any comments on that, please come up. Welcome to come up. Hearing none. Okay, we'll, we'll go ahead and.
You're closing it?
We'll, we'll close that and go ahead and vote on it.
Ms. Callahan, I ask that we move 316 for, for final vote.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Yeah, that's good. Okay, let's, let's move on to 317.
Resolution number 317, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan for the purpose of adding or modifying the Talbot County Capital Project for fiscal years 2023 and 2024 to add a new capital project in the amount of $360,000 for a new emergency generator for the Region 2, Martingham Sewer Service Area and Martingham Water System.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. Ray?
Again, on March 17th, the Pollers' Advisory Board voted 3 to 0, recommending the county council adopt 317.
Okay.
Resolution 317.
And Planning Commission certified consistency with the comp plan for Resolution 317.
Okay, appreciate it, both of you. So, at this time, I'll go ahead and open it up to the floor, the public. If anybody has anything to say, they're welcome to come up here. Other than that, I'll go ahead and close.
Uh, Ms. Callahan, I would ask that we move 317 to a final vote.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second to go ahead and vote. Madam Secretary?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Okay, Madam Secretary, that gets us to 318.
Resolution number 318, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan for the purpose of adding or modifying the Talbot County Capital Project for fiscal years 2023 and 2024 to add a new capital project in the amount of $2.190 million to eliminate septic systems in the villages of Barneck and Fairbank by extending sewer service from the Region 5 Tillman wastewater system.
And again, on March 17th, the Pollers' Advisory Board voted 3 to 0, recommending the county council adopt 318.
Okay.
And the Planning Commission also approved a motion to certify consistency with the Comprehensive Plan.
Okay, great. Once again, I'll open it up to the public for anybody that would like to speak on 318. There's nobody here. Okay, I'm going to close that.
And Ms. Callahan, Ms. Callahan, if I may, before I offer my, my, my motion, I just want to say that this, this is a, a huge step forward for Talbot County. You know, to take those systems offline down in that region of the county in Barneck and Fairbanks and to bring them on to a sewer service facility. What it's going to do for the environment, what it's going to do for property value, uh, what it's going to do for the quality of life in that, that area of the county is going to be huge. So, I just really want to compliment this council and Mr. Clark for all that they've done to, to make this happen. So, at this time, I will offer that the council move 318 to final vote.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion in second to go to final vote on 318. Madam Secretary, could you hold the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Okay, Madam Secretary, could you do Resolution 319?
Resolution 319, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan for the purpose of adding or modifying the Talbot County Capital Projects for fiscal years 2023 and 2024 to add a new capital project in the amount of $43,688,300 for the Region 5 Tillman wastewater system enhanced nutrient removal NR upgrades and eliminating septic systems in and around the villages of Sherwood, Whitman, McDaniel, and Claiborne by extending sewer from the Region 5 Tillman wastewater system.
Again, on March 17th, the Pollers' Advisory Board voted 3 to 0, recommending the county council adopt Resolution 319.
Okay.
And the commission approved consistency with the Comprehensive Plan.
Okay, that's great.
May I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
Um, so that eventually is going to get all, go down to St. Michael's Plant.
Correct.
So, can you explain why we would be putting $43 million into Tillman if we're going to eventually not use that? Just so public understands all this?
Actually, what would end up happening is, we, we are currently working with Maryland Environment, I'm sorry, Maryland Department of the Environment, and Roma Cleffern Call, who prepared the Plumbering and Engineering Report. They did an evaluation of the Region 5 wastewater treatment plant and what it would cost to upgrade that plant. But because of sea level rise and issues to get to that plant, and then ultimately, if we were to extend sewer from that plant, let's say, all the way up Route 50, I'm sorry, not Route 50, uh, Route 33, and we picked up Sherwood, McDaniel, Whitman, and Claiborne, we run into an issue. We run into an issue, let's say, if we have sea level rise and that plant becomes jeopardized. Now, we've extended sewer out to these villages. So, the other option was, rather than upgrade Tillman, we would take the upgrade of Tillman, put that money that was for the upgrade, put that into the system for conveying the wastewater from Tillman back all the way to St. Michael's. That way, if you have a scenario with sea level rise that impacts Tillman, you haven't lost your sewer capacity that would now be at St. Michael's.
Well, I get that part, but this says it's going to the Tillman Plant.
Um, this is, I think, we, we listed it as Tillman, but it's ultimately, this part of the system, um, system expansion, we, we would send all that wastewater flow to St. Michael's, so.
The title is very misleading.
I apologize on that.
So, I don't, I mean, I, I think we're going to, you know, we're going to go with this, but I just find, that's, I, I'm even asking the question for probably the, you know, the fifth time because it's misleading. Because I know I've heard you say that, we're going to St. Michael's.
Right.
You know, sea level rise and all that in Tillman, and yet, you know, most people probably wouldn't understand it.
Yeah, and I think, you know, we were, in Thailand, I apologize on my end, that was probably me, you know, trying to keep it with the Tillman Island wastewater treatment plant. It's, it is, but we're not upgrading it at the Tillman Island Plant. That upgrade would actually be at St. Michael's, so, yeah, from, it is a little bit misleading from that standpoint.
And the, the, the actual language of the Resolution, Section 2, makes it clear that this is.
Yes, it does note that in the, in the resolution, yes.
The, the title notwithstanding.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, any, any other?
No, I, I, again, as I, as I said in my early comments on 318, you know, removing those septic systems from that region, from Whit, from, from Whitman, McDaniel, and Claiborne and Sherwood, um, will certainly enhance the, the water quality down there. Anytime you can remove a, a, a septic system, in-ground septic system, no matter how good it is, how good of a bath system it may be, by design, it's going to leach down into that, that groundwater and put those systems on to a, a, a facility like Region 2. You're just going to add just so much better water quality and, and quality of life and, and property value. So, again, this is another step forward for the county.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pack. So, at this time, I will open it up to a public comment. Does anybody want to come up here and comment on 319? If not, we'll go to a final vote and.
Uh, Ms. Callahan, I would ask council to consider moving 319 for final vote.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, I got a, a motion in second to move 319 to a final, final vote. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Okay, all right, Madam Secretary, could we, would go to 320 now?
Resolution number 320, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan to add or modify the Talbot County Capital Projects for fiscal years 2023 and 2024 to add a new capital project in the amount of $800,000 for individual grinder pumps in the Region 1, Unionville, Tunis Mills, Copperville Sewer Service Area.
Again, on March 17th, the Pollers' Advisory Board voted 3 to 0 on a motion recommending the county council adopt 320.
And the Planning Commission certified Resolution 320 consistent with the Comprehensive Plan.
Okay, any council comment on this one?
I'm just surprised nobody's here to talk about grinder pumps.
Okay, okay, I got you, I got you. Okay, I'm going to open it up to the public if anybody wants to comment on 320. Hearing none, we'll go ahead and, go ahead with the final vote. Mr. Pack?
Yes, Ms. Callahan, I would ask that the council consider moving 320 to final vote.
Second.
Okay, Madam Secretary, we're going to go for a final vote. Could you please call the, the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Okay, 321, Resolution 321.
Resolution number 321, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan for the purpose of adding or modifying the Talbot County Capital Projects for fiscal years 2023 and 2024 for the purpose of adding a new capital project in the amount of $1.5 million for sewer collection system improvements for the Region 5 Tillman Sanitary District.
Again, on March 17th, the Pollers' Advisory Board voted 3 to 0, recommending the county council adopt Resolution 321.
And on April 20th, the Planning Commission certified consistency with the Comprehensive Plan.
Okay, council, any, any comment on that? Okay, I'm going to open it to the public on 321. If anybody would like to comment on that? If not, we'll go ahead and close.
All right, another question. So, what's different between, again, we're still talking about Tillman Sanitary District. What's the difference between 319 and 321?
321 is associated with doing sewer collection system improvements in the Tillman Island system. Tillman Island basically has gravity, a gravity sewer system that ultimately goes to the wastewater treatment plant, and at that point is pumped up into the wastewater system. We would still have that gravity system. This would actually be doing what we're doing in St. Michael's today, which is doing rehabilitation of the existing lines and the roadways, as well as laterals out to the properties. So, this is really addressing, the sewer collection system was installed back in 1990, I'm sorry, 1986, um, and dealing with basically kind of like a less watertight system today than it should be.
Existing customers, not future customers.
This is existing customers, that is correct, too. This is going to basically be everything in the village of Tillman proper.
Okay. The other one is all the other villages around it. Okay, very good.
Okay.
So, is 321, Ray, is going to address some of the R and I issues we have down there?
That is correct, that is correct.
Okay.
If you, if you close, Ms. Callahan, I would ask that the council consider moving.
I got.
I'm sorry, we didn't do that?
I'm going to open it to the public.
I'm hitting myself, okay.
No problem. I'm just going to open it to the public. If anybody wants to comment on 321? Okay, I'll go ahead and close that. Mr. Pack?
Yeah, would ask that council consider moving 321 to final vote.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second to, to move it to final vote. Madam Secretary, call the vote.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, Madam Secretary, could we go to Three Twenty-Two?
Resolution Number Three Twenty-Two, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan for the purpose of reclassifying and remapping certain real property located on Unionville Road, Eastern Maryland, shown on Tax Map Twenty-Four as Parcel One Twenty-Nine from unprogrammed to S-one immediate priority status.
On the March seventeenth, the Public Works Advisory Board did review Three Twenty-Two. They did make a comment about making, transferring the sewer right from the parcel, I think it's eleven A, to the, to the other parcel, which I believe is parcel number one twenty-nine. However, within the body of the resolution is already specified that to be transferred, so ultimately, I think, you know, that was addressed within the resolution, what the Public Works Advisory Board was asking, but they voted three oh to recommend that the county council adopt Resolution Three Twenty-Two.
And on April twentieth, the planning commission voted that Resolution Three Twenty-Two is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Okay, great. Okay, at this time, I will open it to the floor. If anybody wants to come up here and discuss Three Twenty-Two. Hearing none, do we want to close this or keep this one open? Mr. Pack?
I believe we're ready to move forward. We heard from both the planning commission and the comprehensive plan, there's not any reason why not to move forward, so I would ask the council to consider moving Three Twenty-Two to final vote.
Second?
Okay, Madam Secretary, we got a motion and a second to move Three Twenty-Two to a final vote. Could you, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilio?
Aye.
Mr. Leisher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Okay, so we can move to Three Twenty-Three.
Resolution Number Three Twenty-Three, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan for the purpose of reclassifying and remapping certain real property located on St. Michael's Road, Maryland Route Thirty-three, Eastern Maryland, and shown on Tax Map Thirty-three as Parcells Thirty-eight and One Oh Five from unprogrammed to S-one immediate priority status.
Uh, the Public Works Advisory Board tabled this at their March seventeenth meeting. This was then taken up at their March, I'm sorry, April twenty-first meeting, and during that meeting, unfortunately, the way Resolution One Seventy-five is drafted, they would have to vote down Resolution Three Twenty, Three Twenty...
Three.
Three. And ultimately, with that, what they're recommending is that Resolution One Seventy-five be amended for this one-time exception for this Kirkham Station property, which was, there was, I guess, an order to raise the property and then ultimately try to come back with building a new building, and then ultimately, I think, they missed the deadline of one year. They didn't get approval from the Environmental Health Office until probably about, let's say, two months after the one year had ended. So this was been basically, you know, the recommendation of the Public Works Advisory Board would be to adopt Resolution Three Twenty-Two after Resolution One Seventy-five was amended on a one-time exception for this property.
Okay.
The planning commission, they continue Resolution Three Twenty-Two to their May Fourth, upcoming, May Fourth, meeting because they, because they wanted to hear the recommendation of the Public Works Advisory Board, which happened the day following their previous, their last meeting.
Okay, okay, hearing that, open for some discussion for...
We have, open the hearing, I think.
Yeah, do you guys want to talk first, or you want me to open to the public?
Do the hearing.
It's your call, Ms. Collins.
Yeah, council.
Well, I would, I would ask that we not take any action on this tonight. There's still some outlining factors, I think we heard from the Public Works Advisory Board regarding One Seventy-five. I would like to take another look at One Seventy-five. It's been some years since I've looked at that, that resolution, so I need to look at that again myself. And I know we heard probably more from the public about this resolution than the other, so I'd like to delve down in that as well. I know the property owner, property owner did have a, I believe he did have a building permit prior to, that I have to, I must admit, I haven't had a chance to look at that as well.
I don't know, but that sounds like a building permit versus...
I don't think they had a building permit yet because they were waiting, what had happened, and again, if I get my timelines correct, but I think it was in September of two thousand and six. The planning office had issued a notice to the property owner that they needed, they would have one year to build something back in kind. And ultimately, they went to the Environmental Health Office, environmental, so that one year would have ended September twenty-six, I believe, in two thousand and seven. They didn't get anything back from Environmental Health until December two thousand and seven. So ultimately, the action that was, I guess, for them to take action, they were beyond that one-year timeframe, so they had to come back for the full, you know, I guess, meet all the requirements.
Yeah, but a few months is one thing, it's been fifteen years.
I know, and there was, there was an effort, I believe, I would have to go back and get that information for the county council. There was an effort, I think, to amend the Comp Plan Sewer Plan at some point in time, but that was withdrawn. It was like Resolution One Forty-One, if I'm not mistaken. So there were, there were efforts, but it was not supported at that time for getting sewer.
But it sounds like there might be some legal issues with One Seventy-five, that we might have to do something before we can do this.
That is correct, yeah.
So we're in a holding pattern on this one?
We need to go back and revisit One Seventy-five and see what provisions have been made.
Right, and I haven't looked at it in some time.
Okay.
I haven't looked at it.
Okay. Any other comments from council? Okay.
Is this something that we would want to table for now, or how...
I think we're going to keep it open.
Yeah, you can just keep it open, you don't have to really take any action on it. There's no, Mr. Thomas, on numbered resolutions, there is no expiration date on that action, correct? That's correct. So you don't have to do anything.
Okay.
And at this time, is there anybody out here who'd like to talk about?
Only just to clarify, has I...
Yes, come on up, ma'am. Yep. On Three Twenty-Three.
Yes.
Yes.
And I know that I test, oh, I'm Susan Dupont.
Yep.
I live at sixty-eight seventy Travelers Rest Circle. I spoke two weeks ago as the representative of the fifty-five other neighbors that signed against this resolution entirely, and I don't want to go into a lot again, you were kind enough to do that last time, but I do have some concerns about the historical accuracy of this resolution. The, in two thousand and six, the house on Parcel Thirty-eight was asked to be torn down by the county because it was a health hazard and a danger. And two thousand and seven brought the, both the application by the owner or owners, I'm not sure of that, to be connected to the sewer, and that's what One Forty-four was, and it was tabled at last or withdrawn at last. I won't go into details, save that for the next time. But I'd actually come tonight not being sure that we'd be allowed to testify again, and I thank you for that and hope that that will, as the planning commission moves forward and we learn more about these amendments. My understanding of the Public Works meeting was that they wanted not to change One Seventy-five because they felt very strongly that that is a good, strong piece of legislation. They wanted somehow to amend Three Twenty-Two and have it have the language of the one-off on it. But just briefly, as I've been learning more about these issues that you all face all the time, and the delicate balance you try to hold between failing septics, clean water, and preservation of our land, I see that you all are basically headed in the right direction. Thoughtfully enacted comp plans, collaboration with the MDE and the Maryland Attorney General to create the septic tiers, which I have the map of, that I'd like to give you when I'm finished, Resolution One Seventy-five, which I think I have memorized, that preserves the agricultural areas and hopes to improve our waters, all point toward the protection of our land, our citizens, and those who love to visit here. All that I've listened to tonight already of the way you're focused to the future of the people that are currently here with existing issues and existing homes in all the areas that we've already gone through tonight is exactly what I'm talking about. And also, I feel strongly, as do we all, of our neighborhood, that the NILE of Three Twenty-Two is further evidence of this protection. So I thank you. May I give you the map, or would you look it up later?
You can do it.
Tear map?
It's the tear map.
We have those.
Thank you.
Look forward to whatever happens next.
Thank you for your words. Okay, at this time, would anybody else like to come up and speak on Three Twenty-Two? Yes, sir, come on up.
My name is Howard Snyder. I live in Travelers Rest Circle, and I just wanted to make one comment about something that was said, I believe, by the county engineer. While apparently there was some delay on the environmental people getting back to the owner in two thousand and seven, there is a provision in your laws and regulations of this county that would have permitted this property owner to ask for an extension of an additional year to do something with this property, and that was not done. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Would anybody else like to come up and talk about Three Twenty-Two? Okay, at this time, I'll go ahead and leave that open for discussion and at the next meeting, so Madam Secretary, we're just going to leave that open. Okay? Okay, let's move on to Resolution Three Twenty-Four. Madam Secretary?
Resolution Number Three Twenty-Four, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan for the purpose of reclassifying and remapping certain real property located at two six four nine one Royal Oak Road, Maryland Route Three Twenty-nine, Royal Oak, Maryland, and shown on Tax Map Forty-One as Parcel One Fifty-Six, and certain real property located on Royal Oak Road, Maryland Route Three Twenty-nine, Royal Oak, Maryland, and shown on Tax Map Forty-One as Parcel Two Thirty-three, Lot One, from unprogrammed to S-one immediate priority status.
Thank you, Madam Secretary, go ahead.
On March seventeenth, the Public Works Advisory Board basically passed a motion recommending the county council adopt Resolution Three Twenty-Four via a three to zero vote.
And on April twentieth, the planning commission certified consistency of Resolution Three Twenty-Four with the comprehensive plan.
Okay, great. I'll open it to the floor. Does anybody want to talk about or discuss Three Twenty-Four? You're welcome to come up. Okay, if not, council, any discussion on council side?
Question.
Yeah?
There's a couple of these where one member, different time, where a member of the planning commission abstained from the vote. Can you, I'm just curious, because it's like three of them, and different ones abstained and...
If I recall correctly, I think, I think there is just a philosophical disagreement that of extending public sewer to a tier-four property, if I recall.
Say that again?
Extending public sewer to a tier-four property, I think, I think one of the members...
So then their vote should be no. So that's what I'm saying, there's a few of these in here where they abstained, rather than voting no. I mean, we have a planning commission to, you know, it's not philosophical, it's whether it's consistent with the comprehensive plan or not, and because you philosophically don't agree with something, to me, you shouldn't be abstaining from it. We gave you a job, and your, your job is to, so that's kind of a message to any of the, you know, if we have boards and committees and they're, where they're put there to certify whether something, whether it's Public Works, whether it's Planning Commission, or anything else, and, you know, we have a few of these in some of the upcoming resolutions, and you're not put there to be philosophical about it. You're put there for another reason. So I hope that in the future, and this is a message to those boards, you're put there for a reason, and we're going to expect you to vote, so.
Okay.
All right, then. I had a question on this. So with Three Twenty-Two, Three Twenty-Four, and Three Twenty-Five, is that effluent all going to be, and Three Twenty-Two as well, would the effluent from all of those be treated at the same facility?
They'd all be pumped to, they would go indoor to the Royal Oak Pump Station that would then be treated at the wastewater treatment plant in St. Michael's, the Region Two wastewater treatment plant.
Okay, because I know that we had some complaints about allowing Three Twenty-Two because of a capacity issue, but that, that wouldn't be the, we have the ability to add the capacity for these?
Yes, and what we, it's been a while back, I can get you the information, we did go through a summary of the Royal Oak Pump Station, and we identified the number of EDUs, additional EDUs that could be connected to that pump station. So we did do that analysis for you, but that was, I don't remember the resolution, it was about maybe a year or two, two ago when we did that, but I can get that to you.
Okay, thank you.
So, so three of them, Three Twenty-Two, Three Twenty-Four, and Three Twenty-Five are all private homes, and the Three Twenty-Two that we're holding, holding for now is, would be for a business, right?
This, Three Twenty...
Yeah.
It's zone commercial.
Yeah, yeah, it's business, yes, I apologize.
Okay, so, Three Twenty-Four, did I open that to the public? I think I did. I'm not quite sure, did I open?
Yes, you did.
I did. Yeah, okay. Any more comments from council? Okay, it's open, we'd like to go ahead and push that to final vote.
Yes, Ms. Collins, you're closing the public hearing on Three Twenty-Four. I would ask that the council consider moving Three Twenty-Four to final vote.
Second?
Okay, Madam Secretary, we would like to go ahead and put Three Twenty-Four at final vote. If you could call the vote, please.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilio?
Aye.
Mr. Leisher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that's, we're moving on to Three Twenty-Five now.
Resolution Number Three Twenty-Five, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan for the purpose of reclassifying and remapping certain real property located at two six three eight three Royal Oak Road, Maryland Route Three Twenty-nine, Eastern Maryland, and shown on Tax Map Forty-One as Parcel Two Fourteen, from unprogrammed to S-one immediate priority status.
Okay, Mr. Clark?
Again, on the March seventeenth meeting, the Public Works Advisory Board voted on a motion recommending the county council adopt this resolution via a three to zero vote.
Okay.
And on April twentieth, the planning commission certified consistency of that resolution with the comprehensive plan.
Okay, great. I'll go ahead and open this to the public. If anybody wants to talk about Three Twenty-Five? Okay, hearing none, council?
Mr. Callahan, if you're closing the public hearing on Three Twenty-Five, I would ask that the council consider moving Three Twenty-Five to final vote.
Second?
Okay, Madam Secretary, we're going to go for a final vote on Three Twenty-Five. Could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilio?
Aye.
Mr. Leisher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Okay, that's great. Let's move on to Three Twenty-Six.
Resolution Number Three Twenty-Six, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan to authorize Talbot County, Maryland's acquisition of the wastewater treatment plant serving the Preservate Y Mills, with the wastewater treatment plant being located at Rustling Oaks Drive, Y Mills, Maryland, two one six seven nine, described as Tax Map Zero One Parcel Ninety-Eight.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary.
On March seventeenth, the Public Works Advisory Board recommended the county council adopt this resolution, Resolution Three Twenty-Six, via a three to zero vote, but they did have a couple amendments they recommended. The first one was on section, change Section Eight to add, all new lots be connected to the Region Four, the Preservate Y Mills Sanitary District shall be assessed a connection fee of at least, I believe is what they added, fifteen thousand dollars is what they would like, at least fifteen thousand dollars would be added. The other item they had was that add a Section Ten, which states the Homeowners Association shall remain responsible for any problems resulting from the operation of the plant prior to Talbot County's ownership. I would just say at this point in time, council, that the county is working very closely with the Homeowners Association as well as MDE, you know, and is, we're hoping to have engineering services brought on. I don't anticipate that we're going to have any fines or being assessed by MDE on this project, so when we do take this thing over, it'll be the county, and I don't believe there will be prior fees or fines that would be assessed at this point.
And on April twentieth, the planning commission certified consistency of Resolution Three Twenty-Six with the comprehensive plan. There was one abstention, however, that abstention was because they are a neighboring property owner, and, and they, although there's no conflict of interest, they abstained from that vote.
Okay, I got a question. So they, they are, they are requesting some changes in that, as far as cost is concerned. So, Mr. Thomas, does that, so, so we are in a public hearing, we can have comments on that. Should we go ahead, and I'm just asking for qualification here, should we go ahead and not close this and keep that on the public hearing for people to comment on that? Because that's new information to the public.
We can, yes.
Okay, okay.
Is the current language, connection fee of fifteen thousand dollars, so it's not an addition, is that, that's what it says right now, right?
Right, of, and I think they would like to have at least...
And is that because if, if actual costs go, go up, it won't come back on the county?
Right, I think, you know, or we would have to modify that in the future, let's say, amendment to the Comp Plan Sewer Plan.
Because sanitary districts have to be self-sustaining, can't be on the county taxpayer. Is this their own, their own sanitary district? It doesn't incorporate anybody else, right?
Not this time, no. Yes, it's be the, only for the sixty-seven lots that are part of the Preservate Y Mills.
So is the language necessary? Because if it costs more to do that, they're still responsible for the cost. If it ended up costing $18,000, it doesn't come back to the county anyway because it's a sanitary district. Is that correct?
Correct.
So I get your point, but at the same time, they're responsible regardless of whether it says $15,000 or at least, right?
And this is, this is something that, from my standpoint, once we do take that facility over, we're going to have to look at what the costs are. You know, right now, if we were to get a loan of a million dollars, that, let's say that's the capital cost of a million dollars, well, if you divided it by the 67 lots, it comes up almost at $15,000. So I always say $15,000 is probably in the neighborhood at this point in time. So, but it could, to your point, it could go up.
And I guess in theory, it could be a little less.
It could, in theory, maybe.
In theory. So it should be, it really should say, you know, the actual costs, you know, of approximately $15,000. But it's, I mean, obviously, we're only going to charge them what it actually is. I don't know if, if what they're putting in here at least is the right language. It should be, you know, to be reflective of the actual cost of the connection fee.
Right. As determined by the Department of Public Works, that's, that's fine, too.
Right. That we're approximating it $15,000. I mean, if you're going to change the language...
Right.
How do you feel about the next section, though? The responsibility, are you concerned about adding that or not?
I really don't think we need to add a section 10 to that, personally. We are currently very active working with MDE on this project. We meet with them, their enforcement, as well as the Assistant AG's office, pretty much on a monthly basis. And they've already indicated it's in their best interest to get this resolved. So they're not looking at trying to impose any fines or levy any fines or any other penalties on the homeowners association.
And I would just also add that the agreement that we're working on internally for the transfer, that will include that language anyway. So it, it doesn't necessarily need to be in the, the resolution.
And I, I feel like if we use your same logic here, if anybody does assess anything, this sanitary district would be assessed whatever it is assessed, and they would have to pay it any way. The, the users would have to pay it, whether they're paying the homeowners association before they pay it or pay it into whomever's assessing.
So what does counsel think about, instead of the, the language that the Public Works Advisory Board is recommending and just saying, "Shall be assessed a connection," whatever, a connection fee of what the actual, how are, I said just a minute ago?
Maybe assessed a connection charge as determined, determined by the Department of Public Works.
That reflects the actual cost of the connection. I think that's what I said.
That's actual cost.
I think what the Planning Commission was trying to do, and I do apologize for everybody, I couldn't attend that, that particular meeting. I think what they were trying to do, knowing, knowing the members of the, of the commission, was to set a, a basement level of $15,000. Yeah, it could go up. It could go up, you know, depending on the cost of things. But at least the, the users know that I'm paying at least $15,000 to connect. I may pay $16,000. So I think that adding that at least, what the members were trying to hint to is that it's not going to be 15, it could be 16. This is the least amount that you're going to pay for connection, just to give the resident at least a, a number in mind of what they can expect. So the at least, I mean, do you need it? Probably no, because to the point, you're going to pay what you're going to pay. But I understand what the commission was trying to do here is just trying to make sure that the, the residents there know that this is the, this is your basement level that you're going to pay for connecting. It could go up.
I would just like to have the language that says, "Which reflects the actual costs incurred," something like that. We're not just trying to arbitrarily throw a number out there. So.
If I may, one possible amendment would be to say that the lots would be assessed a connection fee representative of the actual cost of connection, which are estimated to be $15,000.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I said.
And it kind of includes that, for property to be connected to the facility before such, such connections shall be subject to periodic changes, tariffs, and policies that may be adopted by the county council from time to time. So it does kind of do both. It shows the, the $15,000, but it also does say...
Exactly. I don't think it's really, it's really needed, the change is really needed, on section eight, tell you the truth. I think, you know, what Frank has read is, is true. Knowing the commission members, I think they were just trying to say, "This is the bottom. It could go up." Do you need it? Probably not. Probably not. We can probably move with the way, the way it's written, so.
I always appreciate more information from them for us to either decide to apply it or not. And I think in this case, I, I fully support the, the idea behind it, but I don't think that we need to apply it practically, because it, it'll be, the second part's going to be covered in the contract, and the first part's covered in the wording here.
Correct. I agree. One more question I want to clarify in my head. This, we're talking about lots only. Are we talking about each, all, every one?
This would actually be for the new connections, so...
Just the new ones?
Yes.
Just the new ones? And how many are, how many are left?
My understanding, there are 53, there are 67 lots, and I believe there's 14 lots that would have to be connected.
Okay. That's what, yeah, when you were talking, I couldn't quite tell.
Yeah, I apologize.
You were saying 54 lots, and, and I just want to make sure, these, these are just bare lots that hadn't been hooked up?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay. So at this time, I want to go ahead and open it up to the public. If anybody would like to, you know, comment on 326, be glad to come up here and, and Hearing none, what's, what's the council's thought process on, on, on this?
Yeah, Ms. Collins, if I may just for a moment.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
This, this is another turning point in chapter Talbot County, you know, to, to get these subdivisions off of their system and, and onto a county operation, as we did with Martinham some years ago during our first term in the council. I think it's a way that this county should proceed in, in the future, and I hope that we, we do draft language that any other subdivision in the county must be built to the county specs and conveyed over to the county for operation. I just think that having Mr. Clark and his team at the helm on these, on these operations is better served for all. I think we have seen in the past that as much as these subdivisions try to keep up the change in technology and try to keep up with the repairs that these systems demand, they just can't. They just can't. So I think that this is, again, another game changer in the county to move this system underneath the county's jurisdiction. I certainly support, I support the language that's drafted, and I do appreciate what the Planning Commission was trying to get at. I do reject, we don't need that additional section of section 10, and, and I think the wording that's drafted by Patrick is, is fine for me.
Okay.
And I, I would just like to say, Mr. Jackson called me up with this problem, Phil Jackson, from that neighborhood community up there, and I didn't know what to do with the information when he gave it to me, but anytime I deal with a crappy situation, I know to call up Mr. Clark and Cory Pack. And I, I really want to thank you both and the Office of Law at that time, calling, going right into MDE and getting the contacts that we need to immediately address the situation. And they couldn't have been more beneficial or more, more willing to help in the situation, recognizing the position everybody was in. So I, I really would like to compliment Mr. Clark for snapping to it very quickly, getting, getting right to this and helping to clean up what is a terrible situation.
And, and you, you mentioned Mr. Jackson, and I, and I will, I will want to tip my hat to Phil Jackson for all that he's done for the citizens up there at, at the Preservate Y Mills. He's been on the front line of this thing. He's been working with Ray and his team to try to get this thing addressed. Anything that we've asked of him, he was very open to get back to us on and working alongside with our state, our state partners. And so that's the kind of resident that, that we all like to see here in the county, that has this interest. I mean, he could say, "Hey, look, someone else's problem," and backed away from it. But he took it on and made sure that it is, is being done. So just want to put out a kudos to Phil for that.
Okay. That's good. Any other comments from counsel?
Just that, you know, I agree that this is an important step forward for, for this, for the county and for this, for this neighborhood. We've, we've had a lot of preparation go into this, thanks to Mr. Clark and, and, and his staff. I, I think that, that the concerns raised by the Public Works Advisory Board are, are also satisfied to my, to my satisfaction here, as, as Mr. DeVio and Mr. Pack have articulated. So thank you.
Okay. At this time, will you close?
Yeah, yes, Ms. Collins, I would ask that the council consider taking a final vote on 326 as drafted.
Second.
Okay. Madam Secretary, on Resolution 326, I'd like to call that for final vote. If you could call the vote, please.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Madam Secretary, next, 327, please.
Resolution number 327, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan for the purposes of providing that startup wastewater treatment for Phase 1, Section 1 of the Lakeside Project and its treated effluent shall at least meet enhanced nutrient removal standards and further providing that connection to the existing trap wastewater system is conditioned in part on the existing, existing system not having any outstanding Maryland Department of the Environment enforcement actions, consent orders, or violations.
Thank you, Madam Secretary.
On March 17th, the Public Works Advisory Board passed a motion basically providing no recommendation on Resolution 327 via a 3 to 0 vote.
Okay.
On April 20th, the Planning Commission approved a motion to certify Resolution 327, 327, consistent with the comp plan, subject to the council adding language clarifying that ENR standards are also applicable for any direct connection to the existing trap wastewater treatment plant.
Read that, read that last part again, Miguel, please.
Sure. They certified consistency with the comp plan, subject to the council adding language to the resolution, clarifying, further clarifying that ENR standards are also applicable for any direct connection to the existing trap wastewater treatment plant.
Uh-huh. Okay.
And then, can I ask a question about the Public Works Advisory Board? And I just commented, you have one job. We asked you to take a position, certifying or not certifying, and they skipped it. So for me tonight, I think they need to go back and they need to do that, and they need to give us a proper recommendation. So I'd like to, and I think we're going to need to hold 328 for other reasons, too. I'd like to hold this one because this is what we asked them to do, and they just said, "Maybe not."
Yeah. I, the only thing, I think, Ms. Price, we would have, our next meeting would be, I think, the third week of Thursday, it'd be a Thursday, the third Thursday of the month. So I think that'd be kind of like the 15th or something, if that's okay. I mean, if we can delay it.
I mean, they, they don't expire. I'm just really disappointed, because that's what we asked them to do. We held off on this because the Planning Commission didn't, well, they had three members available, but we wanted all five. So that's why we held off and why all of these public hearings were continued to today, every last one of them. And then they decided to skip one, when they knew that's what we were looking for and why we held off to voting on or taking, you know, doing a public hearing today.
I mean, we can, we can add that to their agenda if you like, so we'll do that.
Okay. I want to, I want to open it up. Anybody want to comment on 327? Okay. At, at this time, Ms. Price would like to go ahead and keep, hold this open?
Yeah, hold this one open until we get the proper recommendation like that we asked for.
I, I have no problem with it either way. I won't be supporting it whether it come before counsel today or tomorrow, next week.
Right, right.
I think, you know, sending it back to the Public Works Advisory Board, you're probably going to get probably a similar response out of them, but...
But it would, it would, you know, I, I agree with Mrs. Price. I, I, I'm not quite sure why they're not voting on it. I mean, it, it's pretty simple, the yes or no.
Right. And maybe, maybe all five of them would be there next time, too.
Yeah, yeah. So let's, let's give them that opportunity. I'm not sure if it's going to change my idea of anything, but, you know, they need to vote.
Why, did they express a, a reason for it? Did they not think that it would, that it made sense to address or conflicted with something?
It's, I mean, I think it was just, they were done.
You gotta, you gotta know these guys. I got you.
That's not okay. That's not okay. We appointed them to do a job, and I expect them to vote. And I see that another member abstained from the Planning Commission, who voted on this very similar resolution previously and decided to abstain this time. That's not okay.
So, and I, I'm with Mr. Pack. I would request this to be withdrawn.
Well, it's not going to get withdrawn, because I sponsored it, and I asked for recommendations from our two public bodies, and so I think it deserves the opportunity to do that.
Well, and, and I under, I understand that. And recently, we've had a, a discussion about the Bill Burton Park and Trap, and I've made a motion that I would, or spoke with Mr. Pack, that I would go down to Trap to a council meeting and, and let them know what we were doing with that park to kind of get their information on that. And this might be something to, to do as well. Has this been addressed to the town of Trap? Because this would essentially, this would be a major change item to their financial status.
So I'm going to ask that we don't discuss this tonight. We've had this discussion on multiple occasions until we get the recommendations back and we're ready to vote, and we'll finish our conversation. Rather than get into it in the middle of it, because we just went through 15 of them, and this is the only one that seems to be, you know, we all have our positions on it. We're not going to vote tonight because we're waiting on recommendations. And also...
I think I'll take my time at the public hearing, though, to address this, that, that I do have major concerns with how this would be applied to the town of Trap without, without any consent from the town of Trap, as well as I don't, I would like to know personally before I vote, how this is going to affect their bottom line.
So this shouldn't be about money. This is, this is not about whether the developer has paid them a certain amount of money or not. This is about doing the right thing for the environment on technology that exists that might cost the developer a little bit more money, that maybe they should have thought about, you know, before. And I'm, since Mr. Showalter's out in the audience, I just want to remind him that twice publicly, you stated that you would get, get something in writing, that, that following, if MDE gives you guys the approval on the spray irrigation system, that you said that you guys would start building it immediately. I have yet to see that letter from you. So for that same reason, I'd like to hold off, because I'm going to give you the opportunity to have two more weeks to please put in writing what you have publicly stated to the county council on two separate occasions. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. The only thing...
Because that makes a difference.
And I'm, I'm going to say this, and we can certainly move on, Ms. Collins.
Okay.
Is that, and I certainly understand the Planning Commission find consistency, and even that, that statement that you read is kind of surprising to me that they would add that you also had to apply it to the existing plan as well. Because in, in a comprehensive water and sewer plan, it, it doesn't say that the only connection that Talbot County would recognize is connection into ENR plants. It doesn't say that. You can connect into a BNR plant, you can connect into a biolec system, you can basically design a lagoon system as long as it passes muster and, and to be used in the county. So, yeah, I can see on one, on one hand where they can, they would find that 327 would be consistent from a standpoint of connecting to a, an ENR facility, but there's nothing in the comprehensive plan that says that you can only connect to an ENR facility. That, that wording does not exist. And what this is basically saying is actually, in my opinion, adding words that's not, that's not in the comprehensive plan, it says that only ENR systems will be an acceptable, recognizable system in Talbot County.
I think, I think what they, the way the language is drafted now is that treated I think, I think what they, the way the language is drafted now is that treated effluent from the, the startup phase, she'll at least meet E and R standards, whether it's connected to a modular E and R MBR plant or other technology, or to E and R standards if it's connected to the existing Trap wastewater system, and, and I, I think that's what it says, I think what they're conveying is what it says, but they wanted it to be amended so that it was very clear that if it's, any, there's any connection to the existing plant, that that had to meet, those connections had to meet E and R standards, or the treated effluent has to meet E and R standards.
Right, doesn't mean that that, I mean, that plant is in the works, we know that and we hope that that gets there as soon as possible, and I think we're, we've sent a letter already to MDE to fast-track that as much as possible, you know, two more years, hopefully not longer than that, but there is other technology that you can bring in temporary to treat it, it doesn't, it's not a moratorium or anything like that, there, there is technology out there while we're waiting for Trap to get done, which we all will do our very best to support getting it done as fast as possible, there's other technology that can be used temporarily, you know, to treat the effluent for anything that's getting connected, and I think we have to, you know, try to be good stewards of the environment, it costs a little, it costs a little bit more money, we recognize that, but...
I would like to see those options, what, what options are you talking about that would be a temporary fix?
Uh, I've been told that there is modular temporary, that can be kinda like a filter in between, that it can go, pass through something else before it goes to that, it, it's, it's temporary, you can bring, you can, I'm not an expert in it, Ray might be able to, you know, explain it to us better, but it does exist and we've been told that it exists, so, and that's what I'm saying, it's not like Trap wastewater treatment plant has to be upgraded to E and R tomorrow, we're working on that, but meanwhile, you can do something to treat something to a better standard before it gets to the plant, it's kind of an in-between unit, right?
Can you fill me in on that?
I, the only thing I could, I could advise you of is that, you know, I mean, probably would be kinda like a skid mounted or a truck mounted type wastewater treatment system that you would bring in via trailer and then ultimately hook up to that, the problem I think you're gonna run to would be a small system, so it's not gonna be something that you would, let's say, be able to treat the whole town of Trap, it would probably be able to treat the houses that would go into that and then you probably have to discharge it back into the manhole, or send it to the spray irrigation pond if that's been constructed. So, if the spray irrigation system has not been constructed, then you'd have to discharge it into a manhole that would take it to the town of Trap, so...
So, basically tractor-trailer style packaged unit dumping sewer into a manhole?
Yeah, and it, it, it might be some kind of, you know, there, there are some industrial packages that have been set up that way, you know, I'd have to determine what, you know, you'd have to determine what the flow rates would be to do that, but yeah...
Has, has the town of Trap investigated any of that?
I don't know, it's our, it's our decision what we, what we allow, which again, which is the whole reason they came to us for Resolution 281, but if we could hold the rest of, you know, the discussion, since we don't have the full recommendation and maybe some clarification from the Planning Commission on the additional language that they added.
I'd recommend we withdraw it until we have an opportunity to figure out exactly what we're recommending, as well as we speak to the town of Trap.
You're not the sponsor, so I'm not withdrawing.
And that's fine, but I can ask, you know, I can only ask.
But I already told you that I'm not gonna withdraw, I didn't withdraw it two weeks ago, I'm not gonna withdraw.
That's fine, but I would appreciate the information that you could forward to me.
Mr. Showalter, could you come up here for a second? Would you, would you, in the letter that you're gonna write, could you see some of these concerns, cause, could, it, would it be possible for you to clarify some of the differences, why we couldn't do the, the filter system?
Well, Mr. Callahan, I'm not an engineer, so, so caveat that.
Right, I understand that.
I've had some, a number of discussions since I've heard this concept from, from Mrs. Price, and, and I think the, I think we're mixing two, two concepts, so, Resolution 281 did contemplate the possibility of using a modular E and R wastewater treatment plant, which would be a forty thousand gallon per day treatment plant that requires the construction of the lagoons, the spray field, the groundwater discharge permit, it requires a discharge, you have to, you have to discharge the wastewater from that.
Correct, that's for the long-term project, we're talking about the startup phase, we're talking about...
Right, I'm not aware of any temporary, I mean, if, if, if there was a inexpensive, simple modular system that you could put into the flow path and get to E and R quality, the county would do that at Tillman and not spend forty-three million dollars to pump to St. Michael's, you know, Trap would do that at its existing treatment plant and not spend twenty-plus million dollars to upgrade the E and R, if there was some simple thing you could use, it would be, it would be implemented, so, I don't think it exists, but I, I'm not an engineer, so I don't profess to have expertise, the, the notion that you might take just the flow from a hundred and twenty houses and run it through a tractor-trailer industrial system, you know, some, some temporary system, you know, i- if that technology existed, you still have to discharge it, so without a discharge permit, which, which MDE hasn't issued for Lakeside yet, the only thing you could do is put it into the manhole, and what you're essentially doing is putting clean water into the town's collection system, which then mixes with raw sewage and goes to the town's treatment plant, so my understanding is that's essentially the same as I and I, you know, the, the concerns about I and I is that you're getting clean water into the system and it changes the concentration of the waste and affects the biological operation of the plant, so if you, if you had some, some temporary system that could treat a subset of the flow and send basically nutrient-free water...
We're talking about, it's gonna go directly to the Trap wastewater treatment plant now...
But it's going to the Trap wastewater treatment plant with the, the usual wastewater constituents that all wastewater has, and that, that plant has a biological system that's designed to operate based on what it normally receives.
Okay, well, the right thing to do for the developer is to treat it to E and R standards before dumping it into, into rivers that are, that are impaired, and it's not, it's just, it's just not fair, it's just not fair, you've heard from everybody, you've heard from the citizens of Talbot County and what this is, you know, what this is going to do, and, you know, it's been two months since y'all said that you would write this letter and you'd get it into a DRA or something and you haven't done it yet, oh, you'll get it to me tonight, can you really get it into the DRA tonight?
Well, you asked for a letter, I, I, I've said on, I've said publicly, I'll say it again tonight, I will put it in writing and send it to you tonight, when MDE issues the construction permit, issues the NOI for grading, that work, the work has already been bid, contractors are lined up, the work will begin, I'll say it publicly, we will build that wastewater treatment plant as soon as we have permits, I've seen Mr. Alzbach's, you know, pro, in the case, you know, suggestions, that we won't, that's absolutely not the case, we have pricing, we have contractors lined up and waiting for permits.
It's been nine months that we've been having this conversation, y'all should've done it already.
Well, we...
I shouldn't have to be saying it to you again tonight and you haven't done it, it just doesn't give me a good feeling about the whole thing when you knew that this has been a problem since we've really been talking about this from last summer, and it's really disappointing, it should've been done by now.
The, the, the letter?
Yeah, you, we've had this conversation about ten times, up on, up, up here, we've had enough public hearings and enough different resolutions, you knew the concerns of the citizens and several of the council members, and now tonight you say, I'll get it to you tonight, I just think it's disingenuous, I really do.
So, I, I've made the same commitment every time this has come up, it's in the DRA that we will connect as soon as it is completed, and, and we've told you repeatedly, we're just waiting on MDE to issue the NOI for grading.
But you didn't put it in writing and you've been asked for months to put it in writing, and I'm just saying it's disingenuous and it doesn't make me feel real positive that it's actually going to happen.
Well, if you, if you could, if you could put that in writing tonight, then that would be great.
I would go back to my office, I'll send that letter.
That would be great, if you could send that to us in the next...
It needs to be official with the town of Trap and every, every player in there, not just you guys, it has to be official amongst all of the players in this, in this little party.
So, let me just ask for clarity, if I can, you want the town, I mean, the, the developer is the one who's obligated to construct it, what, what do you want the town of Trap to say in that?
I'm still not comfortable with the whole startup phase at all, and so, I, again, I'm not gonna pull, I'm not withdrawing this at this time, you know, we still need to hear from the Public Works Advisory Committee, I'm gonna keep the public hearing open because a lot of the people that we heard from before have not come back on this one, so let's give them an opportunity to do so.
Sort of a magic wand, making all the Trap waste be treated to E and R standards immediately without any money or improvements being made, Mr. Showalter's gonna draft a letter to us that he will build a facility as soon as he has the permit to build it, so if he drafted that letter to us nine months ago, would you be different and not pushing, or would you be willing to, would you have withdrawn this or not had this, if, if we had a letter in hand that he would build as soon as he...
It's hard to say, it's hard to say after the fact because so much of it has changed, testimony that we've gotten from the developer has been a little different, I don't appreciate the fact that you're trying, you know, you see what we're trying to do with Tillman, we've been trying to do that for a while, and for you guys to say that because of the problem in Tillman that you shouldn't fix something in Trap, they're apples and oranges.
Well, let me, let me make it, let me, let me respond to that if I may, because I, I, I applaud what you're doing in Tillman, I think it's fantastic, I think it's great, I, I think what Trap is doing with its P and R, PER is great also, but, but to suggest tonight that the hundred and twenty houses in Trap can't be connected, shouldn't be connected, to Mr. Pack's comment, you haven't imposed a moratorium in Tillman, you haven't imposed a moratorium for the rest of Trap, and I'm not suggesting you should, I think those plants should be used until they're upgraded and then they should continue to be used, but, but I'm challenged to hear you say you can't use the capacity in Trap for those hundred and twenty houses, but there's no problem for a less performing plant in Tillman, you know, issuing a building permit, connecting a new house.
It is higher standard than the biolec, is at least B and R, and...
It, it's plant, its permit standards are less than Trap's and its compliance record is worse than Trap's, and, and the county permits building permits to that plant, I just think there's a double standard.
And you're talking about a handful here and there, what we're talking about now is hundreds, you're not talking about two or three of you getting connected, you know, we can all, you know, live with, you know, two or three or a dozen or something like that, but without, you know, in writing that it could be a hundred and twenty, you know, that's just an arbitrary number, it could be longer than that, depending on how long it takes to possibly get a permit, this still could go on for a long time, and it's just not environmentally sound to do this, you know, when you have an existing plant in an existing town like Trap, you don't have fifty or a hundred homes, not, I'm not talking about the new development, I'm just saying, it, within the, the village of Tillman, or within the existing town of, of Trap or anyplace else, you have, you know, here and there, a couple, you're not talking about a huge new development that we really don't have a lot of standards or sa- safety standards in place to, to protect it, we just, we just don't have it, and...
I would, I would say I don't agree because we just voted to hook up Sherwood, Whitman, McDaniel and Claiborne to Tillman, while we also voted to improve...
Not till after it's connected to St. Michael's.
While it's improving, which is the exact same thing that the town of Trap is doing, they're improving as well, as well as the developers building a brand-new plant, and if nobody complained about Sherwood, Whitman, McDaniel and Claiborne...
No, 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 but they're not gonna go to Tillman, they're, and that's why I asked for clarification in the title, that's why I hate the title of the one in Tillman that I asked Mr. Clark about, because it, again, people are, the public's looking at the title, they might not be looking at the whole bill and they're going, well, why are you spending forty-three million dollars to connect to Tillman that has a problem, no, that's not what we're doing, we're, it's gonna be sending it down to St. Michael's, so, I mean, it is different.
Sorry, the, I was, the one above it, 318 was Barneck and Fairbank.
Right, but the thing is, we were presented a lot of information, and again, I didn't wanna get in a whole discussion tonight, and yet we do, and this is the only one, because people have taken their sides on this, some people wanna protect the developer and the money that's already been paid, and some people wanna protect the, the environment...
Please don't put those words in my mouth.
I didn't.
You just did.
Put it in your mouth, or you put a lot of words in my mouth, and some people wanna protect the citizens, and we have not had one comment, not one, and I know Mr. Lasher said that before, not one comment in support of this.
Oh, that's incorrect, Brian Schmidt came in the last meeting for it.
That, he's a town of Trap commissioner, so that's a...
Who's been appointed, voted by his town and supported by his town.
It, it behooves the town of Trap to get, it's, it's, it's about the money, it's about the money, the developer, it's less expensive for the developer to pay for the EDUs to the town of Trap than, than to try to put in a system, and in all this time, maybe this, something could've started some construction.
I've been working with Nick Noonam and he's been fantastic with keeping me informed and involved, and Mr. Schmidt as well, the, the Trap Town Council is for this project.
Well, of course they are because it's, but they, the town of Trap clearly needs some additional resources, town of Trap has been a very small town that is trying, you know, even before this development, needed to upgrade that plant, and with just a few hundred people, it's very difficult to do, so when you have a big development that's coming in with some funds to help do that, of course they're gonna be for it, and I just don't want the money to be the thing that's doing the talking when the resources, the things that we've talked about, impact fees won't begin to cover what the impact would truly be to Talbot County with schools and public safety and roads and all of that, and I think, and I've, and I've had this conversation with you before on the phone, that that, again, the horse has left the barn, right, you know, the development will, will be built out and sold as people choose to buy the homes, whether it's fifty homes or twenty-five hundred homes, whatever the market is going to bear, but what never really happened, fifteen years ago, when a couple hundred people voted on annexation to grow from three or four hundred people to five thousand, that's never what the annexation law was intended to be, I know MAKO fought this fifteen years ago, but they didn't understand what that was gonna do for an impact, that's what you're hearing, that's the conversation I think I've probably said here and I've had with you, that's why you're hearing from the public, it's not that they hate to have some additional housing, but something of that size and scale, that's why people are speaking on this because of the impact, what it's gonna cost the county for just those three things, and we, you know, the impact fees won't cover that, the taxes won't cover, when we have to build a whole nother school or another public safety, you know, another whole station with another round of twenty-four seven EMTs and paramedics, and additions to the roads, we're still not getting all the roads money back from the state we're supposed to get, those are real huge costs to the entire county of Talbot County, it's not about whether you're the next-door neighbor, that's why people feel the way they do.
And the reason that Trap wants it is because, when I went to Trap, they have, I looked at the Methodist church and the amount of deferred maintenance on that poor church, the population that that town could sustain, it doesn't matter if those twenty-five hundred homes are built in Trap or if they're built on the buildable lots that are available here in Easton, the impact fees are gonna be what they are.
Which have done, you know, are near covered.
I would much rather see the growth happen at Trap than to continue down Matthewstown Road to Denton, to continue down Oxford Road, or to continue down St. Michael's Road closer to the water, I, and I applaud Trap for putting this on the other side of Fifty, farther away from the water, I'm sorry there's a little creek there, but it's not the river, so, when I see Trap, and I, and I see that the little churches there that are struggling to survive, the little town that's struggling to survive, and the opportunity that they've asked for and voted in, and then they come to us and ask us for the support, and then we, we put a moratorium on them, we, we do something that they cannot do, we're forcing their hand on something that they can't do and they've repeatedly asked us to stop.
And the resources, this is gonna cost the county for just a few of the things that I've mentioned that are gonna be millions and millions and millions of dollars.
Whether they're here or Oxford Road, which, which development do you want?
Some of, all of them are kind of a little too big for, for, you know, developers need to pay much bigger impact fees when they're, when they're, you know...
That's not in this, that, it's, where is the growth gonna go, to the town that's asked for it, annexed it, and is doing it?
I don't even know if there's, you know, we're gonna find out if there's a market for all this stuff, cause it's what, four hundred homes near Oxford Road and there's something else out on the other side of Fifty, but this all comes back to information that we were presented, you know, in the last almost year or so, and whether or not all of the information was completely accurate.
It was, when, you can't take a sample from...
Look, I'm, I'm, I'm very done with this, okay?
Yeah, I mean, again, you, you, you start getting into the back and forth about the whole thing, so...
We're, we're way over time, we've asked Mr. Showalter, I appreciate you being up here, and first of all, I wanna thank you for clarifying a few things in my mind of why we can't discharge treated water back into that plant, okay, so, Mr. Pack.
Well, Ms. Callahan, I thank you very much.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we've heard, had an extensive, I've been sitting here watching, clocked fifteen minutes of debate on this, I don't think waiting for a Public Works Advisory Board opinion...
Which it can't make.
Which, which is not, is not gonna change anything.
But they can't make it, they can't make the decision.
Right, so, I mean, I, I understand what Mrs. Price is asking for, to, to, to hold off on this, but...
Yeah.
I, I would make the motion that we call 327 to a vote.
So, that's fine, go ahead, be disrespectful of, of a council member, when any council member asks to hold a vote, they have that respect, except when it comes to something like this.
We've had fifteen minutes of debate on something that is not gonna change.
And I, and from the get-go, it was like, we didn't have all the information, I said, let's not get into a whole debate, and then Mr. DeVilio started the debate, and I'm not gonna be silent when that happens, and then you asked just the representative of the developer to come up and speak, you invited him to come up and speak.
I didn't invite, I invited him...
Yes, you did, you asked Mr. Showalter, would you come on?
Well, first of all, bear with me, let me speak, okay, I invited it up to clarify what you couldn't do, you could not explain it, so I got, but bear with me, I know he's not, but he knows more than you.
Mr. Clark knows more than Mr. Showalter.
Okay, all right, well, you were talking about something you didn't know nothing about, okay, so I, I felt more, I, I felt more comfortable than them coming up here and explaining to him, okay, so we got a motion and a second to call the vote for the final vote, Madam Secretary, call the vote.
Can we clarify that this is a motion simply to move the matter to vote?
Correct.
This is not a vote on the resolution?
It's already been read, it's already been read a second time, it's eligible for vote.
It is.
Yes, it's the vote, it's already been read a second time, number of resolutions don't need to be read twice.
Well, you have your motion and your second, can't change it.
Madam Secretary, call the vote.
Mr. Callahan?
No.
Mr. DeVilio?
No.
Mr. Lasher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
No. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Showalter, I appreciate it, Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and do Resolution 3, 328, please?
Resolution number 328, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan to revise Chapter Three Amendment Procedures.
At, at the March seventeenth Public Works Advisory Board meeting, the Public Works Advisory Board recommended that council approve Resolution 328 with the following amendments, ultimately they suggested that at the end of the first paragraph where it says June or September, they would recommend except for amendments initiated by the county council be added, and then ultimately in the procedures at the end of the last paragraph, delete the proposed amendment, the application procedure set forth herein shall not apply to any comprehensive water and sewer plant amendment initiated by the county, which may be introduced on any legislative day, again, that, that passed... Um, again, that, uh, that passed via three to zero of that.
Okay.
And on April twentieth, the Planning Commission certified that Resolution, uh, 328 was consistent with the comprehensive plan. They also conveyed that staff draft language is part of the update, the comprehensive update to the Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan, uh, that there be language included that ensures intergovernmental cooperation.
Okay, all right. At this time, I'll open it up to the public. Yeah, come on, Mr. Sherwood.
Mr. Callahan, members of the council, I'm, I'm here just as a citizen tonight on this resolution. And just want to highlight the, what you, um, what you heard from the Public Works Advisory Board was a focus on the, uh, accepting the county from the quarterly introduction dates, the, the timeframe constraint that's in the resolution. What the Planning Commission very clearly recommended to the county council was that this be, uh, adopted in a former, in a former manner that still provides for interjurisdictional cooperation. And, and the thing that I'll highlight is, the, the current amendment procedures require for water and sewer plan amendments that involve an incorporated municipality, that those amendments start at the town and, and have, uh, feedback from either the Department of Public Works, Eastern Utilities in the case of the Town of Easton, um, or, or the Town Commissioners in the case of Town Ox, uh, the Town of Oxford or the Town of Trap, that, that provides feedback on the, their system, which is essentially what the amendment addresses. As this is drafted tonight, what's before you this evening, is just one additional sentence, which says, "The application procedure set forth herein shall not apply to any amendment initiated by the county." That relates to not only the timeframes, but also the role for interjurisdictional coordination. So, uh, my, my suggestion, and there's probably lots of ways it could be drafted, but I think if, if your single-sentence, uh, amendment said, "The introduction timeframes set forth herein shall not apply to water and sewer plan amendments initiated by the county," that would give you the flexibility to introduce them at any of your legislative days, but still provide the mechanisms for, uh, collaboration, coordination between the county and the incorporated town, whose system is affected by your amendment. And appreciate your time.
Yeah, thanks a lot, Mr. Sherwood, I appreciate that. Any, anybody else would like to discuss that? Okay, council?
Can we, I was going to say, can we hear from Patrick?
Additionally.
I was just curious what Patrick's thought is on legally, which verbiage.
Sure.
So, I think there's a, the way it was drafted, the idea was that, um, the, the, um, you know, was, we ran into the issue of having these being introduced, only being able to be introduced on a quarterly basis. Um, the way it was written, I, I didn't intend to differentiate between, uh, amendments introduced by the county as opposed to those from the public, so that they could be introduced at any legisla, any, a water and sewer plan amendment can be introduced at any legislative day. So we don't have like we have here tonight where we've got, you know, fifteen of these. Um, I certainly have, if it's the council's pleasure, I have no issue with limiting that just to amendments introduced by the county.
That's what it was always supposed to be.
I thought it was any, any water and sewer plan amendment, not just those initiated by the county.
No, absolutely not. We don't want to be dealing with these, uh, every two weeks. This was always supposed to be drafted.
I'm, I'm, yeah, you're, you're correct, yes. I'm sorry, I misspoke. No, it is just the ones initiated by the county.
Right, that was the whole.
Right.
Idea behind it.
No, I apologize.
That we didn't have to do this on a quarterly basis, but we don't want, you know, every Tom, Dick, and Harry to come to us every two weeks with a comprehensive water and sewer plan amendment.
Mr. Callahan? Yeah. We had, we had a similar request come in late from the Town of Easton, um, to, to essentially the same effect that, uh, of, of the, uh, the Planning Commission's recommendation. Since we, uh, there's, there's no rush on this. Uh, there's no reason for us to amend on the fly. Uh, let's, um, provide that instruction to the county attorney and have that amendment language before us at the next meeting, and, and we can, we can take care of this properly and without, without rushing into it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Does council agree with that? Okay, good. Okay, um, any, any other body in the public want to comment on this? Okay, so we'll keep, um, 328 open, Madam Secretary, for the next meeting. Okay, can we go ahead and Resolution 329, please?
And, and so, just to clarify that, that, that the, that the, um, that we, whether the language is that we ensure the inter-jurisdictional cooperation, or that this matter applies only to the introduction timetable, um, that, that, that is, that is what we're trying to, to achieve with this amendment.
Correct.
And I'll, we can leave you the liberty as to how best to, to frame that up.
I have some ideas. I'll work on that, thank you.
Okay. All right, so we're going to leave 328 up. Thank you, Vice President Lasher. Okay, let's, let's, um, go ahead and do Resolution 329, Madam Secretary.
Resolution number 329, a resolution to adopt a temporary moratorium on the processing of applications for large-scale solar energy systems beyond the special exception stage for a period of five months pending consideration and adoption of such legislation as the county council may consider advisable to promote public health, safety, and welfare.
Um, Miguel, do you want to, do you want to comment a little bit on this? If you don't mind.
Brendan come up with you.
Brendan, yep.
Thank you. Um, as you know, this came out of the joint work session with the county council and Planning Commission, and, um, and the commission's supportive of the, um, the resolution. Um, and I think, um, we've had some preliminary discussion with, uh, the Planning Commission Chair and Vice Chair about a timetable and a work plan to, um, take a look at, um, agricultural offsets for large-scale solar energy systems, um, in a way that will fit within that five-month timeframe for this resolution, um, and, uh, potentially come back with, uh, some recommendations for amendments to the text of the solar regulations in Chapter 190 for the council's consideration for introduction.
Okay, sounds good. Ready?
I don't have anything additional I'd add there. I think the idea and the intent is to, to simplify some of the language in there and to overall just kind of revamp some of the intent of what those offsets would be. Um, it won't be a, a total rewrite of that section, obviously, because there was a lot of efforts put into that in 2016 when that was originally developed. Um, so keeping the revisions would be as minimal as possible. That way, we could facilitate discussion in a public meeting and then present language forward in the Planning Commission and then forward that on EDU.
Okay, good. Good job. Okay, um, all right, so I'll open that up to, uh, the public. Does anybody want to comment on that? Okay, council?
Yeah, um, you know, the, first of all, the only testimony comments we've had have been in support of this moratorium. Uh, we drafted this for as, as short a possible moratorium, five months, but in, in recent reporting, uh, we, we've seen that the PJM Network, the, the distribution cooperative agreement among, among power companies in, I think it's an eleven-state area, revealed that it has a huge backlog of approvals, uh, for, for large-scale solar projects, and it is suspending all of its reviews of any solar projects until they can overhaul their review process. So pushing forward any reviews here under, uh, before Talbot County, uh, before Talbot County reexamines and revises its process will not help any potential solar developer because they can't get through the, uh, the, um, distribution network approvals anyway. This, this measure will, uh, apply to universally to all at a level of playing field, make this moratorium apply generally until our staff and Planning Commission can, uh, can review and make the recommendations to update our code for large-scale solar. So I think it's entirely appropriate that we move forward with this, and I'm, I'm prepared to support it.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Uh, so I, I will, uh, I will, uh, ask that we move this forward to a vote.
Okay.
I'll second and say thank you to Brendan for shaving his mustache before coming before us.
You're very welcome.
Okay, Madam Secretary, we got a, a motion, a second to move this to final vote. Could you please call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lasher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Upstate.
Okay, all right, let's move on to honorable votes, okay? Madam Secretary, um, Bill, uh, 1497.
Bill 1497, a bill to amend Chapter Twenty-four Boards, Committees, and Commissions of the Talbot County Code in order to add a new Article Five entitled Police Accountability Board and Administrative Charging Committee.
Okay, um, and open it for discussion.
Oh, I was, I feel Patrick was going to take the lead on this.
You're going to take the lead on it?
I can.
Okay.
This, uh, this language is required, um, mostly required under state law, um, that the, uh, Chapter Fifty-nine laws of the 2021, the Maryland Police Accountability Act. Uh, we, the, the parts that had, like, leave us some flexibility. Uh, we've worked with Sheriff Gamble, uh, and we've had discussions with municipalities as well. We've had public work sessions on this, so, um, what, what you have before you is, is the version as introduced, and, um, will, will satisfy the, the state law requirements.
Okay.
Uh, I, I just want to thank the sheriff for, for his advice, uh, and, and that of the municipalities in, in helping us to develop what local options there are in this bill.
I, I do think that was one of the bigger Zoom meetings that we've had with all the support from the different municipalities, and I do appreciate that work session to put this together.
Yeah.
There's a lot of great guidance out of, a lot of tenured officers that were able to help us with this. And I, I think that's the biggest benefit to both them and the community.
Right. Ms. Price?
I agree. Sheriff Gamble did a great job putting this all together, and I also appreciate the fact that the municipalities are working with us on this one, so that we don't have to have lots of, you know, boards, separate boards.
Mr. Pack?
Yeah, I will echo the same, uh, sentiments that my colleagues just shared. Um, I think it was a good collaborative effort between, uh, the Office of Law and Sheriff's Office, as well as municipal policing powers. Um, this was something that was pushed down upon the counties to deal with as far as the police accountability boards and administrative charging committees. So we just had to make sure that we were, um, doing this as responsible as we could. I think we made those slight changes where we could regarding how those boards would be formed. Uh, and again, I think that with the input and the work, uh, and I didn't sit on all the meetings, but the meetings that I did attend, I think that the work product was very, uh, very positive, and I think everyone stayed on task as to what we're trying to accomplish here. So, um, I think these boards are probably here to stay, uh, as far as here in Maryland. So we just have to make sure that we, uh, we're doing the right thing as far as making sure that they're created, uh, with Talbot County in mind.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Pack. I, I would agree with my colleagues. I was on the committee, um, Sheriff Joe Gamble and his whole team, we spent a lot of time, probably in the last four to five months, a lot of time with municipalities. Um, like Mr. DeVio said, they're great, um, getting everybody together, and, and we're all trying to achieve the same thing. Um, I want to commend our staff and Clay and Jess. You were in a lot of meetings yourself, and you did a good job with all that. And, and Patrick, you were in a lot of that, too. So you spent a lot of time on that stuff, getting it straight. So, um, I commend you for doing all that and helping us understand where we're trying to, um, get to. And I want to thank Sheriff Gamble for sort of educating us how, how this was going to run and, and all that. And, you know, something that's mandated by the state is, is sometimes hard to swallow, that's for sure. So, um, being that said, um, that's all I will say about that. But anyway, so, um, it's, it's ready for, um, it's eligible for vote. Um, council, um, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion, a second to, um, call for the vote. Madam Secretary?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lasher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Okay. All right, good job. All right, next on line, um, is, uh, the American Rescue Plan Act. Come on up. Hold up, Bill.
I think we have to.
No, 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 you're not. It's not, it's not.
Oh, it's the next, oh, I'm sorry.
Not now.
Soon.
Go ahead, Mr. Lasher.
Uh, so, and, and, uh, as, as staff with this, uh, I'll, I'll actually, I'll invite Cassandra Van Hooser forward, uh, who's been part of our staff team, uh, with this. So we, we have, uh, we've received the, the staff team's recommendations for the allocation. We acted on three of them, uh, last month. Uh, we have the, the balance of the recommendations before us tonight, which include, uh, and as you recall from the, from the full presentation, a million dollars toward the, um, backup nine-eleven center in the northern part of the county that would be combined with a, a, a EMS station.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and this allocation out of ARPA funds would allocate a million dollars that's allocated already in the, uh, in the county's capital projects. So it's basically, uh, it'll, it'll, it'll save that from, uh, from the, the county's indebtedness rather than, uh, going that route to fund this. Um, it allocates three hundred thousand dollars for an ambulance for the Department of Emergency Services. Uh, this, again, is something that is, uh, in our, our capital budget, um, and, uh, and again, will, will offset funds that we've already set aside, and I think that we, we've budgeted for this to come out of the, the ARPA funds. The third is for a quarter million, two hundred fifty thousand dollar nonprofit grant fund. Now, we had a similar fund under the CARES Act fund. The ARPA funds are far more flexible than the CARES Act, uh, but, uh, what, what I, what I would propose is that we, we work through a similar, uh, review process to solicit those, the, the nonprofit organizations in the state and ensure that, that the funds go toward, uh, one-time capacity building projects or toward pandemic-induced costs that, uh, that, that will apply under the, the broader ARPA, and we, we can work out the details of that as, as we move forward. Uh, but that two hundred fifty thousand dollar allocation, uh, there is a recommendation to allocate a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, toward the, uh, the seven area food banks. That would be basically twenty thousand to each of the seven, and another ten thousand dollars, help me out, Ms. Van Hooser, for administrative costs or?
So, for the food banks, we had proposed a two-year grant, uh, for, uh, food-related cost only.
Okay, okay. All of that is food-related cost, thank you.
Okay.
Um, there is fifty thousand dollars in here for the Talbot County Free Library, uh, a capital project upgrading the audiovisual needs in the, in the, uh, the meeting room used by the community. Uh, I will remind you that this is, uh, in the capital budget that is, has been introduced, though not yet voted on by this council, um, and with the anticipation that, uh, that half of that, roughly half of that funding would come out of the ARPA fund. So, um, again, this is, this is not a, we, we discussed this also at budget time. Uh, I think very importantly here, there's a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for a cybersecurity upgrade for Talbot County government. We know, we've seen too many times how not only corporations, but local governments, state governments, even offices of the federal government have been held at ransom by, uh, by cyber criminals. Uh, this is to, uh, uh, this is, this is a preventive measure, an important upgrade to better protect Talbot County government and therefore Talbot County taxpayers from, from a future, uh, a future such problem. Uh, and finally, uh, there's two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in here for allowable administrative, uh, costs in here. That included the cost of the, uh, which is only a very small part of this, for the survey that we, uh, that we, uh, launched, uh, back in December, uh, that collected public input, that I think is valuable not only for the allocation of this funding, all of which is really, you know, proportionally supported by that public feedback, but I think that, that public feedback can be used in, uh, in a number of other future applications as well, in the way we make decisions about priorities for, uh, for any funding that comes our way, most importantly, tax, uh, tax-raised funding. So I, I, I leave these, these, uh, recommendations from the, from the committee before us, uh, and, uh, but before we move them to action, just, uh, if there, if there are any questions.
Do you, would you like to explain, and maybe you just did and I didn't hear, that we've got 2.7 million left?
I did not mention that, but yes. So the part of this is, please remember that we're, the counties allocated a total of seven point, approximately $7.2 million by, in this federal funding. We get it in two tranches. Half of it was received, I believe, last May. This second tranche, the balance of that fund should be received next month. This allocates all but $2.7 million of that total of 7.2, which means that what we can set aside right now, some funding for, at this point, needs that we have not fully defined. We have until 2020, the end of 2024, to commit these funds. We have until the end of 2026 to actually spend these funds. We cannot possibly know today, tonight, all the possible needs that are going to arise out of this. This does commit certainly the majority of the funding to some very important projects, as we've already done with emergency services and with fire and rescue and with broadband, most importantly, the biggest share. But this is making sure that we have, we have something set aside for those further unforeseen needs, which could include the Health Department, which could include any of a number of other things that we do already know about, but we haven't just precisely allocated from this remaining 2.7 million.
Good job.
Vice President Leisher.
Thank you. Cassandra?
I'm batting cleanup tonight.
Are you? You do good. You do good. Hit it out the park.
I really don't have anything to add. I think Mr. Leisher did a great job of laying out for you. We feel comfortable with the amount that we've requested, with that $2.7 million held in reserve for the unforeseen needs. So, you know, I'll echo Mr. Leisher's request that you approve these items tonight.
Okay. Any other discussion?
No. Again, just want to give my congratulations to Mr. Leisher for leading the team, and Cassandra, you know, I know how much time and energy that you all put into this. I think that survey, the, was it Salisbury did that?
Was a beacon out of Salisbury.
Out of Salisbury, right. What was very useful to kind of see where the citizens felt that these funding should go to. Of course, you always got to stay within the guidelines that the federal government gives you. And I was glad to see that they gave more latitude than they did for the CARES funding. CARES funding, you know, working with that and Clay can tell you as well, was very strict, and we were trying to fit, you know, that square into that, into that circle, and trying to make sure that we put the money out there. And we did good. And we gave over, what, $4 million to restaurants, up to CARES money, something like that, neighborly. So the one thing, and I do, and I will vote for all of these, I just, and Mr. Leisher and I did talk about this in the background regarding the $250,000 for County Council grant funding, that we, we work on that to make sure we get the announcements out to those different parties that may have need for these funds, Neighborhood Service Center and another of that sort, so we can get the money out to their hands. Other than that, I think it was a great job, well done, and I will support all the recommendations.
I was disappointed that the Neighborhood Service Center wasn't included on this. As far as homeless support, emergency rental assistance support, food pantry, I, if there's going to be another committee for the 2.7 million, I would like to see Marilyn included on that. I know that she has some asks already, but I, that's a big, that's what was providing this service before ARPA money came out.
Good. Go ahead.
So that certainly could be done. But I did want to point out that with regard to the food pantry, the Neighborhood Service Center, I believe, is included in that. And with the nonprofit grant, they'll be eligible as well. And of course, they're doing wonderfully with the E-RAP grant as well for rental assistance, but we can certainly bring them into the additional conversation here because they do make a tremendous difference.
We do have some other requests that we have not met as a task force since the original recommendations. So there are other requests that still need to be addressed by the task force. I think Marilyn has one of those in as well.
All right. So do we need, we need to take a vote on this?
I'll move, I'll move the recommendations.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. We got a motion, a second, to go ahead and use some of this.
Spend his money.
Right. Yeah. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan.
Aye.
Mr. DeVio.
Aye.
Mr. Leisher.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Mr. Pat.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Stan?
Good evening, counsel. Yeah, no, we're good. He's part of the county manager board. So tonight, we have no important committee appointments. I would invite Phil Starkey, the president of Talbot County Volunteer Fire Rescue Association, forward. And Phil, I'm going to go ahead and read a request here, and then, of course, he is here to discuss the nuances relative to the request. Remember, a request from the Talbot County Volunteer Fire Rescue Association for the use of American Rescue Plan Act funds for the disposal of existing aqueous film foaming foam, known as A triple F, and the purchase of replacement foam. As you read in your existing, if you, as you read in your packet, you see the disposal is proposed to cost $15,903.75. And the second part of the request is a purchase replacement foam for all fire companies in the amount of $49,185.50 from the Whitmer Public Safety Group by piggybacking on a contract through Montgomery County. I know that Ms. Price brought up that there may be a grant opportunity for the disposal of the foam, which would take care of the $15,903.
Mr. Stan, if I may, if I may, it's not a grant opportunity. I'm going to read directly from SB 273, which I have up on my screen right now. On request of a fire department in the state, the department shall take back from the fire department Class B firefighting foam that contains intentionally added PFOS chemicals. The department shall dispose of firefighting foam received under this subsection in a manner consistent with the subtitle. Fiscal year '24, the governor shall include in the budget an appropriation of $500,000 to the department for the purpose of taking back and disposing of firefighting foam under this section. I did double-check with the executive director of Mako during the meeting. That was hence a little bit of text, and my screenshot has not gone through to you yet, but I texted you, and he says it's the same stuff. So that should mean that the $15,000 portion of your request is not necessary.
So when we originally started this with, when I originally met with Clay and we got their proposals, we knew that they had submitted a bill, but we had word from Maryland State Fire Association that the bill was withdrawn.
It's been signed by the governor.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. So then I got a call from the executive committee that the last day of legislating, it was reintroduced. The original bill was to dispose of and purchase. They wanted the state to purchase all foam. That's why it was withdrawn. So they rewrote it for just disposal. MDE is responsible for the disposal. I have contacted them. They have not yet set up a system to be able to take the foam in. They are currently working on that. So as soon as I get word that where we can take it to, or they're going to come pick it up, we will, you know, we won't spend that $15,000. So we're aware that there is something out there. And that was the original reason we upheld it, because I think the prices are from February, early March, because we kind of held it up hoping that the state would go ahead and step up because of, you know, all the 23 counties, they're all going to get rid of it. Nobody can use it, so.
Yeah, I mean, Mako was trying to get, you know, the stuff purchased, you know, to help offset, you know, having to do the replacement foam. But the best, you know, we did get it amended, you know, to at least have them take it back. And I, you know, he checked the SB 273. It has been signed by the governor. So it's a done deal.
So it's just a matter of getting MDE on, getting them geared up so they can receive it and take care of it.
And these aren't mutually, you could do one or, you could buy the new product while still having the other one waiting to dispose of, is that right?
Right. Yeah. So the original plan, we, Sonny Jones and I, Sonny's our new chairman of the chief's committee, so him and I have sat down, we met, and kind of came up with a plan to receive the new stuff so the companies can bring us the old, we'll just switch them out, we'll just do it in one day, so they can all, all take care of it in one day. Right now, we, the county or the association or the county, I guess, we have a trailer in the Black and Dagger plant that has.
Where?
Excuse me, excuse me.
We're going to lose your money.
I'm sorry. We have a trailer that has 100 gallons, has 100 gallons in there that belongs to the county. That's on that list to be disposed of, too. So we thought we'd go ahead and palletize all the return stuff right there, and then they can just pick it all in one location.
Okay. That answers my question. Then I was, I was asking if that's going to be a storage problem if MDE, if you're waiting MDE to give you a plan, good luck. So as long as you can store the expired foam and receive the new stuff, then I don't see any reason why we shouldn't proceed.
Right. Yeah. Mr. Stan?
So counsel, I guess, in light of the new information, I would be looking for counsel support to allow the fire company to purchase the new foam and work with the state to take advantage of the opportunity to return the.
And Ms. Stan, if I could just add, this is a drawdown on the ARPA funding, the $500,000 grant that the council had set aside, the ARPA funding. So this would be a drawdown from those funds.
Yep.
Okay. And by not spending that $15,000 on disposal, it means that that funding can get actually spent for other equipment that the companies need.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the $49,000 purchase.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan.
Aye.
Mr. DeVio.
Aye.
Mr. Leisher.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Mr. Pat.
Aye.
Thank you, counsel.
I do want to thank the council for all the work that you guys do for us and for the opportunity for this grant money. When I talked to Clay about it, I was, I was pretty excited about it. And also with the support, with the North County Station going in. Since I'm from Queen Anne, it's the closest place to me to Quinetta, so.
I know it's been hard on you guys the last couple of years, and we, we really want to support you and thank a lot, thank a lot of you guys.
Yeah. Thank you, guys. Good job. Yeah.
Thank you, Pharaoh.
Mr. Counsel President, members of the council, next time I have is a request from the Roads Department to award bid 2209 furnishing and delivery of possible application of CRS-2L emulsified asphalt with polymer and/or CRS-2 emulsified asphalt as a regional agenda packet, requesting counsel approve award bid 2009 to low bidder of slurry pavers as follows.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We got a motion, a second.
Is that CRS-2 emulsified asphalt?
You do have in your packet. Would you like me to proceed?
I mean, you have a motion in the second. I think we're good.
Okay. You do have, you do have the list of prices per gallon in your packet, and there is enough money in the Roads Department budget to cover the acquisition of the material.
Madam Secretary, we got a motion, a second. Could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan.
Aye.
Mr. DeVio.
Aye.
Mr. Leisher.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Mr. Pat.
Aye.
I'd like to thank counsel for not having me have to.
That's right.
I do have one more item for you this evening. A request, a letter of support for the William Preston Lane Junior Memorial Bridge. This is a follow-up item from the last meeting. The letter is in your packet and was amended per your instruction. I don't know, Patrick, if you have anything you would like to add about that?
I don't, other than to say, we made the amendments that you all had requested at the last meeting. I think those are accurately reflected in the letter.
And of course, since that time, they have actually released, you know, the NEPA-1 study that the, the bridge, if and when it's ever built, will be at the current location. So it's a little, the beginning of our letter was a little unnecessary. I guess we should still send it. Whether or not you would like to reverse the paragraphs and start with making sure that the funding for the NEPA-2 study is in the Department of Transportation's budget, because that's the key right now. So what I would suggest is keep the verbiage the same, but move that last paragraph to the very beginning. And maybe say, you know, you know, change, you know, we understand based on the NEPA-1 that it is going to be at the current location. Thank you for that. And then talk about the NEPA-2. Very slight edit.
Yes.
If so desired by counsel, we certainly can make those changes.
I'd support that.
Yep.
Yes.
Do we want a motion? That form of a motion?
I will make a motion to move the last paragraph basically to the beginning and recognize that the NEPA-1 study is done, and it's already at its current location. Just say, you know, we support that.
Okay.
Second.
We got a motion, a second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan.
Aye.
Mr. DeVio.
Aye.
Mr. Leisher.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Mr. Pat.
Aye.
And that concludes your county manager report. Thank you for your continued support.
Okay, good job. Good job. Okay, next on the agenda is public comment. And Cassandra gets out and leaves. That's good. All right. Okay. I don't think we have anything. Nothing, nothing. Okay. Okay. And lastly, we got counsel comment. Let's start off with Mr. DeVio.
No comment at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Vice President?
I have nothing tonight.
Okay. Mr. Pat?
I'm already packed.
You're already packed. Ms. Price?
I'm packing my purse, too, so thank you.
Okay. I guess I'm going to go with my colleagues. I don't have much either, you know. So, Mr. Leisher, you want to go ahead and wrap things up for us?
The county council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, May 3, beginning at 1:30 PM. The council will be convening an open session at 12:30 PM and then adjourning into closed session to discuss real estate, legal, and personnel matters as listed on the statement for closing that meeting. The council will be holding two public hearings on Bill Number 1498, an act to establish the 2022-2023 annual budget and appropriation ordinance. On that date, 2 o'clock PM here in the Bradley Meeting Room and 7 o'clock PM in the Easton Elementary School cafeteria located at 307 Glenwood Avenue in Easton. Therefore, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting and reconvene as noted?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second. Madam Secretary?
Mr. Callahan.
Aye.
Mr. DeVio.
Aye.
Mr. Leisher.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Mr. Pat.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.